May I request everybody to stand up for singing of our national anthem. Please remain standing for a minute of prayer and meditation. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members.
The Secretary General is directed to call the roll of members.
Roll call of members: Honorable Representatives: Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Atcharon, Asidre, Ako, Adyong, Advincula, Agarau, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez Jose, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magcaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogansha, Asistio, Ataidé, Omentado, Balindong, Barba, Barbers, Baronda, Barzaga, Basko, Bautista, Bautistaling, Benítez, Bernos, Bilyones, Birón, Bolilia, Bondok, Mongalon, Bordado, Bosita, Breones, Brosas, Buhain, Bulut Begdang, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahayon Uy, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro Franz, Castro Jean, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Tua, Hungalaw, Ko Angelica Natasha, Ko Elizaldi, Ko Pilar, Ko Huango Jaime, Ko Huango Mark, Kolada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuwak, Kuaresma, Dago, Dalipe, Dalog, Dayangirang, Daza, De Jesus, Divenesia, Defensor, Dalmar, De Los Santos, Dimaporo Muhammad Kalib, Dimaporo Siti Amina, Yonishyung, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, Di Faustino Inu, Di Faustino Michael Carlos, Di Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Emano, Enverga, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrelia, Yudella, Farínias, Fernández, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuente Belia, Galeios, García Albert, García Dante, García Jose Arturo, García María Angela, García Pablo John, García Vincent, Gardiola, Garin, Gasataya, Gato, Go Ed Christopher, Go Mark, Goles, Gomez, Gonzaga, Gonzalez Aurelio, Gonzalez Neptali, Gonzalez Sandro, Goriseta, Wiko, Gimtu, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Hagidorn, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernández, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Ko Olga, Ko Ricardo, Ko Wilton, Conghun, Labad Labad, Lakson, Laksonoel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagon Sunny, Lara, Lazatin, Lee, Ligarda, Libanan, Limkay Tjong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayad, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikiz, Manuel, Maranyon, Marco Leta, Marcos, Mariano Hernández, Marino, Marquez, Martínez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercador Revilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Nisay, Noel, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, Uwaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ong Tuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uwano Dizon, Padernos, Paduano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pascual, Penya, Pimentel, Plaza, Cleyto, Primicia Zagabas, Humaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rekto, Rehensha, Remulia, Revilla Brian, Revilla Ramondjolo, Reyes, Brilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodríguez Ilohyo, Rodríguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Ieda Marie, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangon, Salo, Salvame, Santos, Saulu, Silverio, Singson Rachel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwan, Swansing Horasyo, Swansing Michaela Angela, Suárez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Maika, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Shai, Tan Huatko, Tariela, Yodoro, Teves Arnolfo, Teves Jose, Tiyanko, Tien, Tolentino, Tulfo Juseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Tutor, Ti, Umani, Unabya, Ungab, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Tuazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villia, Villia Fuerte Luis Raymond, Villia Fuerte Miguel Luis, Villanueva, Villar, Villarazas Suárez, Villarica, Violago, Yamsuan, Yap Christiantel, Yap Christopher Son, Yap Edwick, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jiesel Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora María Carmen, Zamora Isabel María, Zubiri. Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows that 310 members responded to the call.
With 310 members responding to the call, the Chair declares the presence of the quorum. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we defer approval of the journal of the previous session.
There is no objection for the referral of the journal. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now proceed with the reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bills and resolutions in first reading as well as communications and commentary reports if there are any. So move, Mr. Speaker.
There is no objection. The motion is approved. The Secretary General is now directed to read the title of the bills and resolution as well as the referral for the appropriate committee and communication.
Reference of Business: Bills on First Reading. House Bill 830: Redefining the Crime of Illegal Recruitment Committed by a Syndicate by Representatives Duterte, Yap Eric, and Yap Edwick.
To the Committee on Overseas Workers at first.
House Bill 8361: Mandating the 14th Month Pay for All Employees in Government and Private Sector Regardless of Status of Employment by Representatives Duterte, Yap Eric, and Yap Edwick.
To the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation and the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill Numbers 8362 and 8363: Converting the Benguet National High School Alno and Bening Anexes in La Trinidad Benguet into National High Schools by Representative Yap Eric.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 8364: Granting Hazard Pay to All Public Prosecutors in the Philippines During Their Incumbency by Representative Rodríguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 8365: Amending Section 1 of RA Number 11272: Establishing a Specialty Hospital in San Jose del Monte City, Bulacan, to be known as the St. Bernadette Children and Maternity Hospital by Representative Robes.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 8366: Amending Sections 15 and 16 of the National Prosecution Service Act of 2010 by Representative Lara.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 8367: Providing for the Revitalization and Capability Enhancement of the PNP by Representative Chan.
Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 8368: Providing for the Strengthening of the Recruitment Selection and Appointment Process of Uniform Personnel of the PNP by Representative Chan.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 8369: Increasing the Recruitment Quota Requirement of Female PNP Officers by Representative Chan.
Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 8371: Declaring the 3 nautical miles surrounding the Calayaan Island Group and Scarborough Shoal in the West Philippine Sea as marine protected area under the National Integrated Protected Areas System Act of 1992 by Representative Rodríguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 8372: Institutionalizing the Philippine Navy Forward Operating Basis by Representative Rodríguez Rufus.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security.
House Bill 8373: Institutionalizing a Philippine Self-Reliant Defense Posture Program and Promoting the Development of a National Defense Industry by Representative Rodríguez Rufus.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security.
House Bill 8374: Promoting the Development of Philippine Shipbuilding and Ship Repair Industry by Representative Rodríguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 8375: Amending the Basis Conversion and Development Act of 1992 by Representative Rodríguez Rufus.
To the Special Committee on Basis Conversion.
House Bill 8376: Amending Section 1 of RA Number 9946: Granting Additional Retirement, Survivorship, and Other Benefits to the Members of the Judiciary by Representative Velasco.
Committee on Justice.
House Bill 8377: Separating the City of New Canaan from Barangay Pagasa in Alabeo Sarangani and Constituting it Barangay New Canaan by Representative Solon.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 8378: Institutionalizing the Moral Regeneration Program: Establishing the Moral Regeneration National Council by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 8379: Amending the National Building Code by Representative Rodríguez Rufus.
To the Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 8380: Amending PD Number 1829: Penalizing Obstruction of All Apprehension and Prosecution of Criminal Offenders by Representative Rodríguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Revision and Applause.
House Bill 8381: Restructuring and Strengthening the PNP: Creating Additional Police Officers Upgrading Prepositions by Representative Rodríguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 8382: Amending Section 40 of the PNP Reform and Reorganization Act of 1998 by Representative Rodríguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 8383: Providing for the Magna Carta for the Advancement of Agricultural Workers' Welfare by Representative Rodríguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 8384: Requiring Mandatory Autopsy on Bodies of Crime Victims Dead Under Mysterious and Suspicious Circumstances by Representative Rodríguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 8385: Adopting a System of Online Filing of Certificates of Candidacy by Representative Rodríguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Subphrase and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 8386: Providing for the Revitalization and Capability Enhancement of the PNP by Representative Rodríguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 8387: Implementing Stricter Measures on the Regulation and Control of the Use, Manufacturing, Sale, and Distribution of PNP Uniforms, Insignias, and Accountments, and Providing for Punishment on the Illegal Production, Sale, and the Use of the Same by Representative Rodríguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 8388: To Strengthen Disciplinary Mechanism in the PNP by Representative Rodríguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 8389: Further Amending RA Number 5487, known as the Private Security Agency Law by Representative Rodríguez Rufus.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Bill 8391: Establishing the National Employment Master Plan to be known as the Trabajo Para Sa Bahayan Plan by Representative Hernández.
Labor and Employment.
House Bill 8393: Ensuring the Alignment of Basic Education and Early Childhood Education by Representative Benítez.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
Resolutions: House Resolution 1029: Requesting the Committee on Ethics and Privileges to Review the Delation of Congressman Romeo M. Halosos Jr. Representing the First District of Zambuanga del Norte from the Roll of Members of the House of Representatives and After Assessment to Restore Whatever Rights for the Purpose by Representative Villar.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1038: Urging the Appropriate Committee of the House to Conduct an Inquiry on the Recent Fire Incident at the Manila Central Post Office with the Aim of Strengthening Policies for the Preservation and Protection of Cultural Properties Against Fire and Other Hazards by Representative Hernández.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1039: Congratulating and Commending Islay Erica Bumogao for Winning the Gold Medal at the Senior Female Elite 45 Kilogram in the 2023 IFMA Senior World Championship by Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 1040: Congratulating and Commending Juvek Pagunasan for Winning the Japan Golf Tour by Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 1041: Congratulating and Commending Richen Yosores and Alisa Kylie Malari for Winning the Gold Medal at the Under-23 Female MIMY 2023 IFMA Senior World Championship by Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 1042: Directing the Committee on Tourism to Conduct an Inquiry on Who Determines the Carrying Capacity of Tourist Destinations by Representative Matugas.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1052: Commending Bianca Bustamante for her Remarkable Achievement as the First Filipino To Win the F1 Academy by Representative Di Faustino Inu.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 1053: Urging the Committees on Foreign Affairs and Overseas Workers' Affairs to Investigate the Cases of Human Trafficking of Filipino Women to Syria and the Abuse They Suffered in the Hands of Their Employers and Members of the Philippine Embassy by Representative Brosas, Castro Franz, and Manuel.
The Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1055: Resolution Commending the Honorable Ferdinand Martin Girom Waldes, Speaker of the House of Representatives, for his Exceptional Reformative and Effective Leadership of the House of Representatives during the First Regular Session of the 19th Congress by Representatives Dalipe and Libanan.
To the Committee on Rules.
Committee Reports: Committee Report Number 640 and 641 submitted by the Committee on Natural Resources and the Committee on Appropriations on House Bill Numbers 8441 and 8443 respectively.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may we acknowledge the guests of the Honorable Jefferson Conghun from the First District of Zambales, from the group Tabak, Celson Miraflor, Jojo de León, Bayani Villegas, Leonardo Etchore, Myra Rodenas, Mirasol Villamor, Ricky Espinoza, Rhodesa Casison, Ernesto Cabanella, Jong Grueso, Gilbert Durago, Vilma Lazara, Egay Abaygar, Jong Alba, Rose Bautista, Maximo de la Cruz, Lisa Carabeo, Blisilda Ofracio, Gilbert Piñero, Jacqueline Piñero, Berle Durago, and Mr. Kenneth Layson.
To the guests of Honorable Jefferson Edson Conghun of the First District of Zambales, the Assistant Majority Leader of the 19th Congress, welcome to the House of the People. Palakpakan po natin 'yung guest, guest ni Congressman Conghun. Thank you. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may we also recognize the guests of the Honorable Erwin C. Chiang from the 5th District of Manila, namely Frederick Gatmaitan, Manuel García, Alexander Cubillas, Geraldensia, Aris de León, Estela Rebinito, Erlinda Divina Gracia, Andre Lee, Ruel Graho, and Mr. Edwin Amo Chan.
To the guests of Congressman Erwin Chiang, our Chairman of Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries, to the guests of Congressman Chiang, welcome to the House of the People. Palakpakan po natin, welcome. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend session.
Session suspended. Session resume. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt the proposed rules of the House of the 19th Congress, printed copies of which have been distributed to the members as prepared by the Ad hoc Committee on Rules Rewriting and approved by the Committee on Rules. I so move.
There is no objection. The motion is approved. Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt our provisional rules of procedure governing inquiries in aid of legislation as the rules of procedure governing inquiries in aid of legislation of the House of Representatives of the 19th Congress. I so move.
There is no objection. The motion. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt our provisional rules of procedure in impeachment proceedings as the rules of procedure in impeachment proceedings of the House of Representatives of the 19th Congress. I so move.
There is no objection. The motion. The motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend session for a few seconds.
Session suspended. Session resume.
Mr. Speaker, may we acknowledge the guests of the Honorable Loreto Atcharon from the Lone District of General Santos City, Mr. Vince Parás, the reigning World Boxing Association Asia South Flyweight and WBC Flyweight Champion. With him, Mr. Speaker is Mr. Raymond Enrile.
To the guests of Congressman Atcharon of General Santos, welcome to the House of Representatives. Palakpakan po natin ang ating champion. Thank you. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may we also acknowledge the guests of the Honorable Milagros Aquino Magcaysay, Ms. Carmelita Tamayo, Priscila Resurección, Norma Lipata, Esmeralda Quijano, Editha Castillo, Rodrigo Tamayo, Bernardita Pabalán, Mierna del Mundo, Rodolfo Acuna, Renato Ramírez, Emilita Yureta, Ana Marie Espiritu, Estelita Miranda, Mari Lu Patel, Eda Ando, María de la Cruz, Dolores Remedio, Benedicto Monfero, John John Bilarmino, and Ma'am Elvira Arnan.
To the guests of Congresswoman Milagros Aquino Magcaysay of the United Senior Citizens Party List, nandun po sila sa bleachers. Palakpakan po natin. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Salamat po. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may we also acknowledge the guests of the Honorable Bong Teves Jr., namely Honorable Janice Angela Ilagan, Honorable Nicole Pampolina, Honorable Edgardo Brice, Honorable Hans Christian Rondilia, the Honorable Manuel Rondilia, Mr. Pio Kumia Jr., Mr. Gabriel Flores, Ms. Tony Matuto, Ms. Carol Rondilia, Ms. Joy Ilagan, and Mr. Yu Rondilia.
To the guests of Deputy Majority Leader Jose Bong J. Teves, sa mga guest po na nandito, palakpakan po natin, welcome to the House of the People. Maraming salamat po. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of business
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of business for the day, I move that we consider House Bill 7728 as contained in Committee Report 468 of the Committee on Natural Resources. Mr. Speaker, copies of which were distributed to our members. Therefore, I request that Secretary General be instructed to read the title of the said measure without prejudice of insertion to the records of the text thereof. So move, Mr. Speaker.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill Number 7728, an act simplifying the procedure in the disposition of public agricultural lands, amending for the purpose Section 24 of Commonwealth Act Number 141, otherwise known as the Public Land Act.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend session.
Session suspended. Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill 7728. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Haringnan, motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend session.
Session suspended. Session resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, under the calendar of business for the day, I move that we consider House Bill Number 8187, contained in the Committee Report Number 548, under the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms. May we ask also that the Secretary General be instructed to read the bill as all the bills have already been previously distributed to the members.
Is there any objection on the motion? Motion is approved. The Secretary General is now directed to read the title of the measure.
House Bill Number 8187, an act declaring National Election Day as a regular non-working holiday, amending for the purpose Section 26, Chapter 7, Book 1 of Executive Order Number 292, otherwise known as the Administrative Code of 1987.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
There is a motion to open the sponsorship and debate. Is there any objection? Haringnan, motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the Chairperson of the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms, Representative Maximo Dalog Jr. of the Lone District of the Mountain Province, be recognized to begin the sponsorship of the measure.
Congressman Dalog, the sponsor, please proceed to be recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. We say that the value of any election is determined by the people who choose to show up, but it bears reminding that the value of any election is also equally defined by those who do not show up. Isang mapayapang hapon, kagalang-galang na speaker, mga kasamahan ko dito sa kongreso at sa sambayan ng Pilipino. It is my honor to stand before you all again, here in the House of the People, to defend a legislation made for the people, House Bill Number 8187, which intends to declare National Election Days as regular working day holidays. It cannot be stressed any further how the exercise of one's right to suffrage is pivotal in determining the path of the Philippines as a nation. In every election, we encourage and join and empower people to vote because the bedrock of democracy is no other than the power of the people. It is during election that democracy is most alive, where the demos or the people are given the opportunity to exercise their cratos or their power. As I have stated in the start of this message, Mr. Speaker, the value of any election is determined by the people who chose to show up. I know that we are all advocates of exercising the right of suffrage. As voters ourselves, we take pride in casting our votes and fulfilling our obligation to our nation. Sadly, Mr. Speaker and my dear colleagues, for many of our fellow men, voting does not mean merely showing up at the polling place. It may also mean traveling long distances to their hometowns or trekking down the mountains or crossing rivers or missing a job with a no-work-no-pay policy. For many of our fellow men, it may also mean spending hours trying to find one's precinct or enduring the heat and humidity of summer or falling in line for hours to make sure that we make it to the cutoff. Voting has varying meanings to every voter. It is not simply a matter of showing up. The past national elections were all declared special public holidays by virtue of various presidential proclamations. And in all these proclamations issued by the then-respective former presidents, election days were declared holidays in recognition of the need to enable the people to properly exercise their right to vote. Mr. Speaker and all my distinguished colleagues, House Bill Number 8187 is the legislative embodiment of what is already regularly recognized by our Chief Executive. While the proclamation of a national election day as a special non-working holiday may seem app, its declaration as a regular non-working holiday is a permanent recognition of every voting Filipino's right to vote. It is the embodiment of the value of each Filipino vote holds. Throughout your support and the support of this honorable chamber, I believe that in the next national elections to come, we will no longer just encourage and join and empower people to vote. We will also enable them to properly exercise their right to vote. Let House Bill 8187 be one more reason for our people to find a better option to show up and vote. I end this message with a powerful line from former U.S. President Barack Obama. "There is no such thing as a vote that does not matter. It all matters." Marami pong salamat sa inyong lahat, pagpalain nawa ang sambayan ng Pilipino ngayon at sa bawat bukas. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Congressman Dalog. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The termination of sponsorship and debates now approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Majority Leader.
I move to withdraw my previous motion.
Your motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we call on Representative Congressman Abalos to also give his sponsorship of the measure, Mr. Speaker.
Congressman J.C. Abalos, you are now recognized.
Mr. Speaker, Chairman Dalog of the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms. Sa aking mga kasamahan dito sa kongreso, magandang hapon po. I am honored to sponsor a bill which I believe is long overdue, House Bill 8187, that seeks to make a National Election Day a regular non-working holiday. Voting, along with the right to participate in public affairs and the right to have equal access to public services, is a fundamental human right that is absolutely vital for the democratic processes. It is therefore crucial for the government to take proactive steps, such as passing legislative measures that guarantee all citizens shall have the opportunity to exercise their democratic rights to its fullest extent. Sa araw ng halalan po, Mr. Speaker, iba-iba ang sitwasyon ng pagboto ng bawat Pilipino. Ang ilan sa atin, malapit lamang ang kanilang presinto na pagbabotohan. Siguro pwede ng lakarin o ilang kanto lamang ang layo pwedeng sasakay lang ng tricycle o jeep. Subalit, Mr. Speaker. Sa ibang kababayan natin, kailangan pa nilang maglaan ng mahabang oras ng paglalakbay para makaboto. Na madalas ay nauwi sa pagkaubos ng buong araw nila. O kayaman, dahil sa malayong probinsya pa sila nakarehistro, ipagliliban na lamang po ang pagbaboto. Bukod pa po rito, Mr. Speaker, pagdating sa presinto, kailangan pang maghintay ng ilang minuto o oras dahil sa haba ng pila na kadalasan ay sinasabayan ng matinding init ng araw o malakas na ulan. Gayon pa man, sa kabila ng mga hamong ito, nakakatuwang marami pa rin sa mga Pilipino ang handang magsakripisyo dahil sa pagpapahalaga po nila ng kanilang karapatang bumoto at pagtupad sa tungkulin sa ating bayan. In truth, Mr. Speaker, many Filipinos take pride in casting their votes on Election Day despite these hardships. However, Mr. Speaker, national election is considered a mere special non-working holiday. Further, it is only considered as a special non-working holiday by virtue of a presidential proclamation which is customarily issued shortly before every national election. Bilang isang special non-working holiday, Mr. Speaker, ang ibig sabihin po nito, ayon sa ating Labor Code, ang mga nagtatrabaho sa araw na ito ay bibigyan lamang ng karagdagang tatlong pung porsyento sa kanilang arawang sahod. Habang ang mga hindi pipiliing magtrabaho ay walang aasahang sweldo dahil sa no-work-no-pay policy. Ako po ay naniniwala na ang mga butante ay dapat maging malaya mula sa anumang pagdadalawang isip para sila ay makaboto. That in the minds of every voter, they should never have to make a choice between the future of our nation and their ability to earn a day's wage to support their family. In the previous election, Mr. Speaker, the voter turnout recorded a commendable rate of 83%. Consider the potential impact if we were to establish an election day that eliminates the constraints of work and other obligation, thereby creating a day that is more convenient and makes our voters an integral part of the electoral process. Kung ihahambing po sa karanasan sa ibang mga bansa tulad ng South Korea at Australia, kung saan ang araw ng pagboto ay opisyal na kinikila bilang isang regular non-working holiday, sila ay patuloy na nagpapakita ng mataas na antas ng partisipasyon sa mga butante. On average, these countries maintain a voter turnout rate of 75% to 95%. Mr. Speaker, esteemed colleagues, House Bill 8187 endeavors a shift in Filipinos' perception about elections that in the act of casting one's ballot will no longer be regarded as a mere obligation. It can be embraced as a day of celebration that unifies us as a people and as a nation. By fostering a sense of collective pride towards the significance of the electoral process, we shall elevate it beyond a mere obligation, rather transforming it into a shared experience that brings us together. Kung susuriin ang mga nakasanayang kalakaran, halimbawa sa huling araw ng taon, December 31, na kadalasan ginagawang special non-working holiday bilang konserasyon sa mga kababayan na nagnanais makauwi sa kanilang mga pamilya sa probinsya. Minsan nga, nangyayari din ito tuwing January 2 na dinedeklara na special non-working holiday para naman may tamang haba ng panahon para makabalik tayo sa mga lugar kung saan nagtatrabaho. Isipin po natin, hindi ba dapat mas bigyan natin ng malaking halaga ang isang araw kung saan tayo bilang mga mamamayan ay makaboto para sa kinabukasan ng ating bansa? Mr. Speaker, designating the election day as a regular non-working holiday allows voters to take their time and make thoughtful, well-informed choices. It provides ample opportunity for undecided voters to carefully study the qualifications of all candidates. This ensures that voters do not feel rushed and can give proper consideration to their decisions. Sa pagbibigay ng tamang oras at pagkakataon para sa mga mamamayan, nagampanan ang kanilang karapatan sa pagboto. Maaari nating palakasin ang partisipasyon ng bawat isa at tiyakin na ang mas nakaraming tinig ang mapapakinggan sa paghubog sa kinabukasan ng ating bansa. Mr. Speaker, these and more are the reasons why House Bill 8187, an act declaring National Election Day as regular non-working holiday, should be given thoughtful consideration and passed by this body. I thank this August Chamber, their competent and able leadership, for providing this opportunity and forum so that the vision of House Bill 8187 endeavors becomes a reality. Muli, maraming salamat, Mr. Speaker, dear colleagues, at magandang hapon po sa ating lahat.
Maraming salamat. Mr. Speaker. Congressman J.C. Ah, Majority Leader. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Representative Ruffus Rodriguez to also manifest his sponsorship of the measure.
Congressman Ruffus Rodriguez.
Interpolation, Mr. Speaker.
Ah, is that an interp... You will first open the period of interpolation.
Okay. Mr. Speaker, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? The sponsorship and debate is now closed.
We cannot close because...
We are now...
We cannot...
Majority Leader, Majority Leader.
We cannot close the debate. We're going to have this debate now.
No, no, Majority Leader.
Yes, Mr. Speaker, may I recognize the Representative Ruffus Rodriguez for his interpolation?
Sorry, the period of sponsorship and debate is not yet closed.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Congressman Ruffus, you are now recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Would the proponents, the author and the sponsor yield to some interventions from this representation?
Mr. Speaker.
Congressman J.C.
Mr. Speaker, it would be an honor for me to yield to some interpolations from the Honorable Rodriguez.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. First, I support this very important measure that will move from just proclamations, transition from executive proclamations to become legislative fiat, that national elections will be a special non-working holiday. Based on the rationale for such a particular declaration by law that it should be special non-working holiday, my question, Mr. Speaker, is how about regional elections? We have one region of our country as approved by this Congress twice, the Bangsamoro Autonomous Region Muslim, and now they have. They are also part of elections that will be called. However, the bill, is it correct that it only speaks of national election? Would that be correct statement, the honorable sponsor?
Mr. Speaker, the Honorable Rodriguez is correct. The House Bill only covers elections that are national in scope. Section 2 of the bill provides the term "national election" shall include activities such as plebiscite, referendum, people's initiative, recall election, special election, other processes of voting of a similar in nature which are national in scope.
Yes, I have read that, and it is national in scope. So what happens to our elections of our Muslim brothers? And there is now a pending bill, which we support, to be able to establish the Calderriera Autonomous Region. Is it not that to be able to address the same concern that our Muslim brothers and our Calderriera brothers, once they become a region, that we should include regional elections to be able to cover already what is provided by Article 11 of the Constitution on Autonomous Regions and the Local Governments? Would the Congress, would the sponsor be able to accept in the period of amendments, your honor, your Mr. Speaker, that amendment that will include... that amendment that will include regional elections in being able to recognize that regional elections are very important? Regional governments are important. In fact, precisely, former President Rodrigo Duterte talks about federalism, that different regions will be separate states, separate regions, and let our regions develop and not just Metro Manila. So would the particular, our sponsor be able to accept when we move in the period of amendments, individual amendments from this representation to be able to make his law, his bill whole such that it should be remembered as being sponsored by the honorable gentleman, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Sponsor.
Mr. Speaker, I accept the proposed amendments of the Honorable Rodriguez.
Thank you. So in the period of amendments, I will stand to be able to, be able to move to include regional elections. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Congressman Rupus. Thank you, Mr. Sponsor. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
There is no objection? Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is carried. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now open the period of amendments.
We are now on the period to open the period of amendments. Is there any objection? The chair is none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend session for one.
Session suspended. Sessions resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee amendments, I move that we now proceed to open the individual amendments.
We will open the individual amendments. Is there any objection? The chair is none. Motion is carried.
Mr. Speaker.
Yes, Congressman Rupus.
Period of individual amendments. So we'd like to therefore move that we include in this particular section, subject to style, in section two.
Congressman Rupus, Congressman Rupus, can we just give the floor to the floor leader?
Yes.
Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may I now move to recognize our Representative Rupus Rodriguez to give his individual amendment?
Congressman Rupus Rodriguez is now recognized.
My apologies to our dear majority leaders who are present today. Yes, so I move that we include the regional elections. Let us be able therefore to afford our Muslim brothers who have already the Bangsamoro law and future in the Cordilleras because we hope the Cordilleras will have their own autonomous region. And so I am so moved to amend section two to be able to define regional, regional elections as included as special, non-working holiday. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Sponsor.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, as, not as a special working holiday, but it should be a regular holiday.
Sorry, a regular, non-working holiday. That's correct.
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we accept and approve the proposed amendment.
The amendment is accepted.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
The period of amendments is now closed. Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is carried. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now vote on second reading, House Bill number eight-one-eight-seven.
There is a motion to approve, House Bill number eight-one-eight-seven.
As amended.
As amended. Those who are in favor, please say aye. And those who are against, please say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill number eight-one-eight-seven is now approved on second reading. As amended. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend session.
Session suspended. Sessions resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we resume consideration on second reading, House Bill seven-seven-two-eight. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. House Bill seven-seven-two, it is now direct to Secretary General to read the title of the bill.
House Bill number seven-seven-two-eight, an act simplifying the procedure in the disposition of public agricultural lands, amending for the purpose, section twenty-four of Commonwealth Act number one-four-one, otherwise known as the Public Land Act.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
The sponsorship and debate is now opened. Is there any objection? Hearing none. Motion is carried. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Carlos Paduano for his sponsorship. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Congressman Carlos Paduano is now recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Majority Leader. Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues. On behalf of the Committee on Natural Resources and our beloved chairperson, Representative El Pidio F. Barzaga, Jr., it is my honor to sponsor House Bill number seven-seven-two-eight entitled "An Act Simplifying the Procedure in the Disposition of Public Agricultural Lands", amending for the purpose, section twenty-four of Commonwealth Act number one-four-one, otherwise known as the Public Land Act. This bill seeks to amend the Public Land Act with the goal of simplifying and updating the publication requirements in the disposition of the public agricultural lands. Specifically, Mr. Speaker, the bill seeks to, number one, shorten the period of publishing in the official gazette, the notice for the sale of the land from six consecutive weeks to two consecutive weeks. Number two, Mr. Speaker, remove the option of publishing the notice in Spanish or in local dialect. And number three, increase the threshold land value that requires publication in the official gazette and in newspapers from two-hundred-forty pesos to fifty-thousand pesos. At this point, I'd like to request that exploratory note of the measure be considered as my sponsorship speech. Considering that most important of this measure, I earnestly urge the immediate passage of this bill. Thank you very much. Mayong hapon, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Sponsor. Congressman Paduano. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no members who wish to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
I think there is a gentleman from...
Mr. Speaker, I withdraw my previous motion.
The motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, may we recognize the Honorable Rupus Rodriguez for his interpolation?
Congressman Rupus, you are now recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Would the distinguished colleague, my good friend Carlos Paduano, sponsor accept some interventions from this representation?
Lordly, Mr. Speaker.
Please proceed, Congressman Rupus.
Yes, can you again give us the salient changes on the simplification for this public land being applied for, for titling?
Mr. Speaker, there are three major changes.
Yes.
Of date, uh, our Commonwealth Act one-four-one, based on section twenty-four, Mr. Speaker. Number one is to shorten, instead of six weeks publishing in the official gazette, we will make it two weeks. Second, Mr. Speaker, remove the option of publishing the notice in Spanish or in local dialect. And number three, Mr. Speaker, increase the threshold for the land value from two-hundred-forty pesos to fifty-thousand pesos.
Uh, thank you, distinguished colleague. Mr. Speaker, on the first one, why do we just remove publication in the official gazette and newspapers? Nobody reads the official gazette to the newspapers, especially after the pandemic. Why would it not be sufficient to just post them in conspicuous places where the property is located? So that there will be no more. It's very expensive to be able to publish these particular applications when in fact there have been holders for quite some time on this land. So can we, in the period of amendment, be able to remove publication requirements in the official gazette and also newspapers but just posting in three conspicuous places in the province or city where they are located? Mr. Speaker, may we know the response of the Honorable Congressman Paduano?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I do agree with the proposition of the good gentleman from Tagayandehoro. Well, in fact, Mr. Speaker, reading the bill, Mr. Speaker, it stipulates not only publication in the official gazette or in newspapers, but if practicable, it will be placed in the property. Miss moodon sa property, Mr. Speaker, your honor.
Aside from being placed on the property, we should also require at least three place, conspicuous places, meaning if it is in the barangay, in the barangay, and then in municipality. Because to me, we still have that particular requirement of some publication, but not any more expensive like in newspapers or in the official gazette because nobody reads them, including this representation. Would you be agreeable that will be conspicuous places and the land itself? The land they will put up a notice of the land that is being applied for? Would the distinguished sponsor agree to that amendment?
Mr. Speaker, you know, sponsor, I agree with your proposition, Mr. Speaker.
The proper times, Sir Chairman, Sir Speaker, I will therefore move in the period of amendments. The second one is that while it is true that we can take out Spanish, we should not be able to remove local dialects, especially these are in the barangays. And so therefore, I would move that this be amended to remove Spanish but retain publication, there's an English and there is the local dialect of the area where the property is located. Would the distinguished sponsor agree to that amendment?
I do agree, Mr. Speaker, with the proposition of the good gentleman from Tagayandehoro. Well, in fact, not only national newspapers, but we will also publish it in the local newspaper. So I agree with the, with the proposal of the good gentleman from Tagayandehoro.
In fact, no more. Even local newspapers, no more. No more publication. Conspicuous places and the land, they should put a notice on the land. My only proposal now is that we remove Spanish, correct? But then we retain in that, you know, notice, there is a notice of this application and aside from the English version, we have the local, but no more Spanish. Would that be acceptable to the Honorable Paduano?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, the good, the good gentleman from Tagayandehoro, I will have to consult my principal, which is the Chairman of the Committee on Natural Resources. Just give me a few minutes after this interpolation, I'll just call and I will ask for the position of the Chairman of the Committee on Natural Resources.
I support that request of the Honorable Paduano. The third point, the third point is from two-hundred-fifty pesos to fifty-thousand pesos.
Correct.
Uh, is it not that fifty-thousand is still a very small? Right now, our, the land that is already involved have higher already values. Would the Honorable Paduano agree that it should be the requirement of these conspicuous places will be over a hundred thousand, Mr. Speaker?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, yung fifty-thousand is only based on, uh, a parcel of land which has around one-thousand square meter at fifty pesos per square meter. And that is still, that is still happening, especially in the countryside, Mr. Speaker.
I agree. Yeah, fifty pesos is still a valid one. So I will contain my amendments to just two of the particular bill sponsor, the Honorable Carlos Paduano. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Tagang salamat, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other members who wish to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend session.
Session suspended. Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
I move to suspend session, Mr. Speaker.
Session suspended. Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill seven seven two eight. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill number eight two six five under Committee Report number five seven eight in the Committee of Banks and Financial Intermediaries, and copies of which have been already distributed to the members. And I request therefore that the Secretary General be instructed to read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill number eight two six five.
House Bill number eight two six five, an act providing for the registration, regulation, and operation of cooperative banks.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now call on the Chairperson of the Committee of Banks and Financial Intermediaries, Representative Erwin Teng of the Fifth District of Manila, to be recognized to begin his sponsorship of the measure.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Representative Teng is recognized. Please proceed to sponsor the measure.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, in behalf of our committee, the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries, it is my honor to sponsor the Cooperative Banking Act. In the interest of time, I respectfully move that the explanatory note of the bills be adopted as my sponsorship speech. So I move, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship in debate.
Ah, Mr. Speaker.
Yes.
Mr. Speaker, may I withdraw my motion?
Yes. Your motion is withdrawn. The chair recognizes Honorable Ruffus Rodriguez.
Ah, Mr. Speaker, would you...
Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may I suspend session for a few minutes?
Session suspended. Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Honorable Congressman Filimon Esparas to give his sponsorship of the measure.
Honorable Esparas is recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, ah, distinguished colleagues, esteemed guests, mayong hapon. I would like to thank our Chair of the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries, Honorable Erwin Teng of the Teng of the Fifth District of Manila for his effort of making this bill presented today. Today, I am proud to present for your consideration and approval House Bill number eight two six five entitled An Act Providing for registration, Regulation, and Operation of Cooperative Banks, otherwise known as the Cooperative Banking Act. This House Bill is the culmination of immense-long deliberations and consultation so that the Committee on Banks and Intermediaries can present the best version of this piece of legislation before this August body. House Bill number eight two six five is the consolidation of four bills. House Bills number one zero two three and three eight three three both filed by Representative Pablo Gianif Garcia, representing the Third District of Cebu, and House Bill number four one zero nine, filed by Representative Joseph Stephen Paduano, representing a Bang Lingkod party list, and lastly, House Bill number one three two nine, filed by yours truly on behalf of the Kop Nat Ko party list. These House Bills all recognize the pressing needs to institutionalize a specific legal regime to govern the cooperative banking sector. Currently, cooperative banks are governed by the Republic Act number seven three five three or the Rural Bank Act of nineteen ninety-two as amended. However, rural banks are vastly different from cooperative banks. One glaring difference is that the stakeholders or the stockholders of the rural banks are individuals, while the cooperative banks are made up of cooperatives. As such, there are certain rules concerning rural banks that do not necessarily apply to the unique characteristics of cooperative banks. At the same time, cooperative banks as cooperatives must also comply with the Cooperative Code. While the code is comprehensive to its own, it is not sufficient and of itself to govern the regulation and operation of cooperative bank as banking institution. As such, this confusing legal regime is a hindrance to the continued development of the cooperative banking sector in our country. Thus, it is imperative that cooperative banks have their own separate and distinct rulebook in order to acknowledge their special and unique existence. This bill precisely aims to recognize the distinct nature of cooperative banks while laying down the foundation for their organization and operation. It aims to institutionalize the presence of cooperative banks in our country, as well as its role in bringing inclusive financial services to the, to more sectors of our society, especially the grassroots sector. Through the passing of this bill into law, hopefully, we can help the B S P reach its goal under its digital payments transformation roadmap to have seventy percent of Filipino adults have bank accounts by twenty twenty-three. Further, this bill not only expands the membership of cooperative banks, but importantly, empowers them to provide wide range of savings, credit, and other financial services, such as acting depository of conduit banks for the government's lending programs and participating in government allocation programs that promote financial inclusion. Ultimately, this House Bill number eight two six five hopes that, ah, ah, hopes to encourage more members of the public to expand their financial literacy by providing an avenue for more banks to grow sound, stable, and sustainable operation. This in return will support the growth of cooperative sector as a whole by promoting self-reliance and communal unity in the attainment of economic development and social justice. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, at this point, I would be remiss of me not to share that a version similar to this bill was passed during the Eighteenth Congress. Hopefully, this version is able to hurdle this both Houses of Congress and can ultimately be passed into law. With that, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, I fervently hope for consideration of this August body in the review and passage of this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now recognize the gentleman Honorable Ruffus Rodriguez for his interpolation.
The Honorable Ruffus Rodriguez is recognized for his interpolation.
Ah, thank you, Mr. Speaker, the majority leaders who are here with us. Would the gentleman, Congressman Esparas, Chairman, ah, accept some questions from this representation?
My pleasure, yes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. I am in agreement that there should be a law that will govern and regulate cooperative banks. We know what is the regime now that is followed by the cooperative banking system?
Ah, Mr. Speaker, and the gentleman of the, ah, Cagayan de Oro, as of now, the cooperative banks are governed by the Charter of the rural banks, which I have mentioned in my sponsorship speech, that it is different, no, from the composition, the membership, and the control management of the rural bank are individual, while cooperative banks are, ah, juridical, who are cooperative, different cooperatives in the area.
Ah, Mr. Speaker, this representation agrees with the statement of the sponsor that certainly rural banks are entirely different from cooperative banking. We know from the bill what are the incentives? You know, cooperativism is always a very good program for our people, because here people come together for the common good. They are working for their members, and they are not only thinking of oneself, but the membership of cooperatives. So we know from the bill what are the incentives and provisions that will encourage cooperativism in this country? Because it is sad to know that cooperatism here has had setbacks in the past. And the reason for this is that once it is a cooperative, some officials will take advantage of their position in the cooperative to the detriment of the ordinary members of the cooperatives. And that is a fact. That's why we have some problems in, and Congressman DeGoc is here, we have problems in electric cooperatives. We have to really be able to have some security and measures and also being able to have safeguards and incentives. We know now from the distinguished sponsor what are the safeguards and what are the incentives for this new cooperative banking law?
Yes, Mr. Speaker, and my distinguished colleague, Honorable Ruffus of Cagayan de Oro. Ah, we have several silent features on this bill. And in terms of the incentives, as what you have mentioned, it is there in this bill that registered cooperative banks will be exempted also in some tax relief. At the same time, ah, it's, ah, on the publication requirements for the foreclosure of the lands and even in the exemptions for the maximum landholding limits, you know, as enjoyed by also with the other entity under agrarian law. But then, another features, Mr. Speaker, with this provision right now of the cooperative bank, we allow foreign cooperatives to invest also. And that's one silent feature for this, because cooperative ah, at, at, right now are included in the negative list of foreign investment. But then, of course, we still abide with the provision of maximum of forty percent. So foreign cooperatives in some other country, they can also invest to the cooperative banks here in the Philippines. But in the former rural bank charter, wala to dito. So maraming, ah, magagandang version. Even the government will now be the depository, you know, of the government fund to the cooperative banks. And cooperative banks can even invest in equities of allied undertakings. So like before, hindi yan pwede.
Ah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Let us discuss these new provisions and incentives in Seriati. First one is that income tax holiday. Will the rural banking system not be governed in terms of fiscal incentives by the new create law, which has all the benefits for those which are considered to be industries that are listed, that will become incentive, that will be able to receive the incentives under the create law? We know whether this bill would adhere and be able to give what is given by the incentives given by the create law?
Ah, I think, ah, ah, we, we, we have, ah, what is the specific incentives that you're mentioning?
A lot of incentives from the create law. Income tax holiday, some other incentives as provided by the create law. So maybe we know from the, our sponsor, because you are backed up by the Committee on whether which of the create law incentives are included in your bill? Because I believe cooperativism should get the support of Congress.
Mr. Speaker, ah, Honorable Gentleman of Cagayan de Oro, um, create laws covers only corporations, not in these cooperative banks. So the mentioned incentives a while ago are just, ah, national taxes and local taxes and the charges, you know, of, under the Cooperative Code have been applied to this cooperative bank.
Ah, please be specific. Income tax holiday. Is there an income tax holiday? How many years?
There, in our Cooperative Code, the, ah, Honorable Ruffus, ah, wala kaming holiday on the income tax. No I T H. Wala.
No. How about other incentives that are provided by the create law? So no income tax holiday? So what are the incentives that we give? Because certainly, we wish to have a cooperative law that promotes cooperativism and cooperative banking. A principle of cooperativism is always a very excellent one for our people.
Mr. Speaker, ah, based on this Cooperative Code, ah, cooperatives are accepted only on the income tax ah, up to one hundred million ah, surplus, no? Which transact both members and non-members. Above on that would be the taxable na.
So no tax for...
Ten million and below.
Ten million and below. So right now, what do the, ah, the cooperatives pay in relation to the Rural Bank Act in terms of taxes and fees?
Mr. Speaker, the existing Cooperative Code right now, the incentives is just ten million and below. But then, with the new provision of this, with this bill, it is increased into one hundred million.
I agree. That is a good incentive. What else? That is a good incentive. What else? So that we will hear what is really what we can give to our cooperative, ah, organizations in our country? What else, aside from the over one hundred is now the threshold?
Ah, also, Mr. Speaker, the cooperative banks also enjoy the privileges on the local taxes, you know, fees and charges. So...
Are they exempt?
Yes.
From local taxes, municipal business tax, municipal franchise tax, municipal fees. You know, local governments have taxes on franchise, taxes on business, taxes on, ah, on, ah, amusement, taxes on, ah, and fees, as separate from taxes. What does our law provide?
So, from the Cooperative Code, ah, Mr. Speaker, it's only on the local taxes, you know?
So free from local taxes?
Yes.
Did we get the approval already of the local government units that you are going to exempt cooperativism from any local tax?
Mr. Speaker, it is existing right now, you know, that, ah, registered cooperatives, including cooperative banks, are exempt from local taxes.
Already? Alright. So what else do we have?
So, what I have mentioned, Mr. Speaker, it might be in the amendments later on, ah, we will be introducing that the dosary provisions of the BSP will not apply to cooperative banks, ah, whose members will, will avail the financial services.
So you're not going to have the dosary rule apply for cooperative banking?
Yes, their members. But the officers, of course, they are covered for that.
Of course, they should be covered, because they cannot more, they could not get, ah, the loans, ah, a large chunk to the officers themselves. Let's go now to, ah, foreign investments in rural banks. Up to how much are they allowed to invest under our constitution and under our laws?
Mr. Speaker, it's still there, a maximum of forty percent, you know, that the foreign cooperatives can, ah, put, ah, investment, you know, or stocks in the cooperative bank.
Only after forty percent?
Yes.
Where is that found, that limitation? It's not in the constitution, because the constitution only speaks of six. There is no mention of cooperative banks or rural banks. So where does that particular limitation of forty percent? Where is that? Where is that law? That only restricts forty percent? Because, Mr. Speaker, if they have no control, that is why there will be no influx of, ah, foreign investments. If they will give only forty percent, and then Filipinos will decide on the entire hundred percent, because they're in control of the rural bank. Why not increase, allow the increase? So that they will have control? Because after all, what is important is that this is open to all who will borrow. What is the basis for only forty percent?
Ah, Mr. Speaker, ah, it is there in the policy requirement of the Prudential, ah, ah, rule, you know?
What?
Forty percent. Prudential policy requirement.
Which rule is that coming from?
That's from the policy.
Yeah, which agency? Banco Central ng Pilipinas?
Yes, of the BSP, of course, ah, Mr. Speaker.
Ah, BSP. Mr. Speaker, I believe that we should allow at least sixty percent, as long as there's still Filipino ownership, because the intention here is to get foreign funds to be able to lend to our cooperatives and members in our country. Ah, that is not a reserve rural banking or corporate banking. It's not reserved by the constitution. Would you be agreeable to an amendment that will allow a maximum of sixty percent they control?
Ah, Mr. Speaker, I think, ah, during the deliberation with the co-op sector, ah, the cooperative don't want that, ah, our own, ah, interest will be protected also, that, ah, the benefits more will be enjoyed by the members rather than by, by the investors. So that's the, ah, stand of our cooperative leaders that time during the consultation.
Mr. Speaker, and that is why, ah, there are very less investments by foreign bodies, by foreign investors, because, you know, at forty percent, they will be putting money and they have nothing to do with policy. So I think, ah, in spite of what they would want, we want to get the benefit of foreign investments in cooperative banking to allow more people to borrow from rural banks. Don't you agree, Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleague? Yung forty percent, eh, wala ang magbibigay dyan at only four. Wala silang kontrol eh. They cannot put dollars there and they have no control. Give them forty percent, my, my sixty percent of foreign, forty, my Filipino pa. Then we have more money coming to our banking system to be able to lend to our, our, ah, people in the countryside, especially cooperative members.
Mr. Speaker, I think the, ah, wisdom there of the cooperative leaders is just that, ah, suppose if it is a cooperative, will be controlled by, ah, by the locals, you know, rather than the, the foreign, you know? So that's why they limit that up to the forty percent, not up to the sixty percent. So that's the wisdom, ah, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, that wisdom is not anymore obtaining. We have liberalized the banking system of the Philippines. Banks can have here, offshore banks are allowed in the Philippines. And so, in the proper time, I will move for the amendment of that to at least, to have a maximum sixty percent for foreign, so that they will have control. What is important is not control by cooperative leaders. What is important is the, are the funds that are given in, because after all, the borrowers will not be foreigners. The borrowers will be cooperative members of the locality. So why will you limit the investments? As I have said, the banking sector has been long been liberalized. So not foreign banks are operating here. So, ah, I'd just like to manifest that in the proper time, that is one amendment that I will propose, Mr., Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. Period of sponsorship and debate is hereby terminated. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee amendments, may we now, ah, proceed to the individual amendments?
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend for a few minutes.
Session suspended. Session is resumed. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill Number 8265.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we resume consideration on second reading, House Bill 7728, and that the sec, and we request the Secretary General, Secretary to read the title of said measure. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill 7728.
House Bill Number 7728, An Act Simplifying the Procedure in the Disposition of Public Agricultural Lands, Amending for the Purpose, Section 24 of Commonwealth Act Number 141, otherwise known as the Public Land Act.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, the parliamentary status of the said measure is that we have terminated the period of sponsorship and debate. I now move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee amendments, I move that we close the period of committee amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open, ah, consideration for individual amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Rupos Rodriguez for his individual amendments.
The Honorable Rupos Rodriguez is recognized. Please proceed.
Ah, thank you, Mr. Speaker. Would the distinguished representative sponsor, ah, accept and receive, ah, some of the amendments as proposed? I'm going to, I'm going to propose.
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Yes, Your Honor.
Yes, the first one, Mr. Speaker, is my amendment to remove the publication in official gazette and in national and local newspapers, and we'll just have three conspicuous places, barangays and municipality where the land is located, and on the land itself for the notice of that application, Mr. Speaker. Would, ah, distinguished sponsor accept the amendment?
What is, what does the sponsor say?
We accept the amendments.
What does the House say?
The majority accepts the amendment.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. The individual amendment is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. On the second proposal to remove Spanish as one of the languages, I have conferred with the former President of the Republic of the Philippines and former Speaker of the House, the Honorable Gloria Macapagalaroyo, and she has urged me not to remove Spanish, so that our Spanish cultural heritage will be maintained. So therefore, I would not anymore move for the, ah, ah, for the removal of Spanish, but instead, move that in that notice, we'll have the English, and then we have the Spanish, and we have the local dialect in the notice, Mr. Speaker. So move.
What does the sponsor say?
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
What does the House say?
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair here is none. The individual amendment is hereby approved.
We have no more further amendments from this representation. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Majority Leader. Thank you, Congressman Paduano. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Your Honors.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, there being no other individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? The chair here is none. The period of amendments is hereby terminated. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill 7728. So move, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to approve House Bill Number 7728 on second reading. All those in favor, please say aye. All those against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 7728 is hereby approved on second reading. As amended. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, we acknowledge the presence in the gallery of the guests of the Honorable Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romaldes and Majority Leader Manuel Manix Dalipe from the officials of the Philippine National Police. They are Police General Benjamin Acorda Junior, Police Major General General Tomo, Police Major General Bernard Banak, and Police Brigadier General Nicolas Salvador.
To the guests of our honorable Speaker, Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romaldes and Majority Leader Manuel Jose Manix Dalipe, the officials of the Philippine National Police, may ang pagabot sa kongreso, welcome to the House of Representatives.
Mr. Speaker, we would like also to recognize the guests of the Honorable Bong Tevez and Congressman Loretto Amante, the Honorable Mayor Glenn Pampolina Flores of Alaminos Laguna.
To the guests of the Honorable Tevez, welcome to the House of Representatives. A round of applause for them, please.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 8327 as contained in Committee Report Number 608, submitted by the Committee on Public Order and Safety, copies of which are, have been distributed to the members. I request that the Secretary General be instructed to read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? The chair here is none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill Number 8327.
House Bill Number 8327, An Act Restructuring the Philippine National Police, Creating Additional Police Offices and Appropriating Funds Therefore, Amending for the Purpose, Sections 25, 26, 29, 30, 31, 35, 35-8, 36, 67, and 67-8 of Republic Act Number 6975, otherwise known as the Department of the Interior and Local Government Act of 1990, as amended, and Section 32 of Republic Act Number 8551, otherwise known as the Philippine National Police Reform and Reorganization Act of 1998.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Chairperson of the Committee on Public Order and Safety, the Honorable Representative Dan Fernandez, to begin his sponsorship of the measure.
The Chairman of the Committee, Representative Dan Fernandez, is recognized to sponsor the measure.
Ah, thank you, ah, Mr. Speaker, and, ah, my distinguished colleagues. Ah, it is my honor and, ah, privilege to sponsor Committee Report Number 608 on House Bill Number 8327, principally authored by, ah, Speaker Ferdinand Martin Romaldes and, ah, Majority Leader Manuel Jose Manix M. Dalipe, entitled, "An Act Restructuring the Philippine National Police, Creating Additional Police Offices and Appropriating Funds Therefore, Amending for the Purpose, Sections 25, 26, 29, 30, 31, 35, 35-8, 36, 67, and 67-8 of Republic Act Number 6975, otherwise known as the Department of Interior and Local Government Act of 1990, as amended, and Section 33 of Republic Act 8551, otherwise known as the Philippine National Police Reform and Reorganization Act of 1998." Mr. Speaker, Republic Act 8551, or the PNP Reform and Reorganization Act of 1998, mandates the National Police Commission, or NAPOLCOM, to submit to Congress a proposed reorganization plan of the PNP not later than December 31, 1998. Apart from the 1998 PNP reorganization plan, the NAPOLCOM has submitted to Congress a reorganization plans for the calendar years 2008, 2009, 2011, and 2013. The House of Representatives, through a joint resolution, approved the reorganization plan in 2011, 12, 13, and 14 Congresses. However, these were not enacted into law. Subsequent bills on reorganization of the PNP have been filed in the 15 up to 18 Congress, but had not paired well either. However, this has not deterred the NAPOLCOM and the PNP from making vital institutional changes to the police organization structure. In accordance with the constitution and existing laws, these changes were introduced in order to make the PNP more responsive to the demands of public safety. Distinguished colleagues, allow me to discuss some of the salient points of this legislative measure. House Bill Number 8327 proposes to amend the following sections of Republic Act Number 6975. Section 25, by establishing the area police commands in cluster police regional offices, district offices at the metropolitan level, and city police offices... district offices at the metropolitan level, and city police offices at the highly urbanized independent city level. Number two, Section 26, by besting in the chief of the PNP the power to select the members of the command group from among the qualified officers in the service. Number three, Section 29, by establishing the different key position in the PNP organization. Section 31, number four, by providing for the appointment of PNP officers and members to the position and corresponding rank. And Section 35, 35-8, 67, and 67-8, by enumerating the national administrative and operational support units of the PNP. The bill likewise proposes to insert new sections in Republic Act 6975 as follows. Section 25-8, in Republic Act Number 6975, by providing for the following PNP directorates and directorial staff. Letter A, the direct rate for personnel and records management; letter B for intelligence; C for operation; D for logistics; E for plans; F for controllership; G for police communities relations; H for investigation; I for training, education, and doctrine development; J for research and development; K for information and communication technology management; and for Section 25-B, in Republic Act Number 6975, by establishing the area police commands in five APCs, namely: Northern Luzon Area Police Command, Southern Luzon Area Police Command, Visayas Area Police Command, Eastern Mindanao Area Police Command, and Western Mindanao Area Police Command. Lastly, Section 25-C, in Republic Act 6975, by creating the special police offices which shall consist of the Center for Police Strategy, Strategy Management, Human Rights Affairs Office, Peace Process and Development Center, Command Center, Public Information Office, Liaison Office for the Office of the President, Liaison Office for the Department of Interior and Local Government, and Legislative Affairs Center. Furthermore, the bill proposes the creation of the following national administrative support units: Labingapat Puto, Philippine National Police Academy, National Police Training Institute, Logistics Support Service, Communication and Electronic Service, Information and Technology Management Service, Finance, Health, Training, Retirement, and Benefits Administration Service, Headquarters Support Service, Chaplain Service, Engineering Service, Legal Service, and lastly, Recruitment and Selection Service. In this bill, Mr. Speaker, likewise, we propose to create the following national operational support units. One, CIDG, Civil Security Group, Special Action Force, Anti-Cybercrime, Maritime Group, Intelligence Group, Aviation Security Group, Highway Patrol Group, Forensic Group, DEG, Police Security and Protection Group, Police Community Affairs and Development Group, Anti-Knapping Group, Explosive and Ordinance and Cannon Group, Integrity Monitoring and Enforcement Group, and last, but not the least, the Women and Children Protection Group. Mr. Speaker, I wish to emphasize that all the offices and units mentioned in the bill are presently existing and are in the current organizational structure of the PNP. House Bill Number 8327 seeks to institutionalize reforms in the PNP that are not attuned to its evolving nature as a police organization. Since the passage of the DILG Act of 1990, 33 years ago, the mission of the PNP has expanded to include operations against cybercriminals, extremists, and foreign terrorists. The PNP has also been in the front lines from the beginning of our battle in the COVID-19 pandemic. This proposed legislation is ambitioned to enhance the PNP's response to the unprecedented global challenges facing us today. I therefore earnestly appeal for the immediate approval of this bill. Mr. Speaker, maraming maraming salamat po.
Tagang salamat. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we recognize the gentleman from the Second District of Cagayan de Oro, the Honorable Representative Rufus Rodriguez, for his interpolation.
The Honorable Rufus Rodriguez is recognized to interpolate the sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Our distinguished colleague, our sponsor, may I ask whether the sponsor would be willing to accept interventions from this representation?
Surely, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you so much. Before my interpolation, let me just welcome and congratulate the new PNP Chief General Benjamin Acorda. Over there, can he rise up? Mr. Speaker, the people of Cagayan de Oro, which he served, with distinction and with proper implementation of the laws in an excellent administration of Region 10 as our Regional Commander, Regional Director of the PNP for two years, presiding over a peaceful, orderly elections in 2022. General Acorda now is the sitting head of the PNP, and we in Cagayan de Oro, Nissames Oriental Region 10, have witnessed the excellent performance of this gentleman. If there's any appointment of the President, recent appointments, we can say that this is truly an excellent one coming from President Ferdinand Bongo Marcos. With that predicate, Mr. Speaker, we are in support of my distinguished colleague, Chairman of our committee, who is sponsoring this, the honorable, the honorable and venerable Dan Fernandez. We are in support of this. And the only question I would like to ask our good sponsor is, General Acorda is new as our PNP chief, and this bill has been pending for some time. Can the sponsor now assure that the new PNP chief is in favor of this bill being deliberated today?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. That's the reason why the support of the GPNP, the presence actually of our GPNP being here right now is 100% in support of this bill. As a matter of fact, Mr. Chairman, during the deliberation of this joint resolution and House Bill Number 57779, together with Congresswoman Agabas and Henry O'Connell, and together with the members of the committee, creating the Technical Working Group headed by Congressman General Acop, they were all in support of this bill. Precisely for the reason that this is pending for 33 years. The offices and units and all the different parts of the country, all the offices have been existing for so many years, but institutionalizing these offices had been lagging, and this causes the demoralization of our PNP organization. And with the presence of the GPNP, together with the other members of the... Can you kindly stand up, gentleman? With all the support of the high-ranking official of the PNP organization, I am surely 100% that they are supporting this bill.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. The mention of the Technical Working Group Chairman, the Honorable Workaholic Chairman of Transportation, my colleague in previous Congresses, Romeo Acop, would immediately tell me to sit down and just approve this because whatever our Technical Working Group, the very respected, our PNP-respected retired Chairman of Transportation meeting every week, we therefore would say that we support the Technical Working Group. But I would like to get the thumbs up because it came from our sponsor, but I would like to really get the thumbs up of our good general and all the officers that you are in favor of this bill. I see them all giving a thumbs up, and I also say thumbs up, we support the bill to reorganize and modernize the PNP. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, to answer that last... Well, it's not an answer, but a manifestation on the part of the good gentleman from Cagayan, pertaining to the Chairman of the Technical Working Group, which was chaired by Congressman Acop. The very reason I ordered him to be on the plenary, to be a part of the deliberation of this bill, this representation would like to highlight the extrinsic and the hard work that was given by General Acop in passing this in the Technical Working Group. That's the reason why, General Acop, Congressman, you are a part of this deliberation. And practically speaking, all the hard work of the committee, which I chaired, I transferred to this guy. So, Mr. Speaker, Mr. Congressman from Cagayan, maraming maraming po salamat sa inyo pong manifestation.
Tagang salamat. Thank you to the sponsor and then to the distinguished interpolator. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no other member who wish to interpolate, I move that we terminate the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we open the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who wish to introduce any individual or committee amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. The period of amendments is hereby terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 8327.
There is a motion to approve on second reading, House Bill Number 8327. All those in favor, say aye. All those against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 8327 is hereby approved on second reading.
Mr. Speaker, again, after 33 long years of suffering heartache and headache on the part of the PNP organization, finally, with the series of non-action of the both Houses of Congress, the Senate and the Congress for the last 33 years, finally, we have put something on rest. And this will give the high morale for the PNP organization. Again, to this Congress, maraming maraming po salamat. At the PNP organization, mabuhay ang PNP! Maraming salamat po.
Congratulations, Chairman.
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend the session.
Session suspended.
33 years.
Chief, chief, chief. Tay do para historical dyan, di ka na, gua. Sa senado na lang tayo. Pare, pare, lahat ng... Acop, Acop. Romeo, Romeo, Romeo. Taya lang tayo do, pa-picture lang tayo. 33 years siya, no? 33 years siya. Parang charo.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Because...
Ready po. Ready, sir. Ready, ma'am. Salimang po.
Camera, camera. Salilang po, salilang po.
Bruce.
Di bauna, ako po.
Picture time. Here.
Session is resumed. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, before you proceed, may I request that you acknowledge the guests of the Honorable Christopherson Coco M. Yap from Southern Leyte. They are Mr. Efren Bilbao and Mr. John Sunga.
To the guests of Representative Yap, welcome to the House of Representatives. Big round of applause for them, please. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we consider House Bill Number 8269 as contained in Committee Report Number 580. Copies of the bill have been previously distributed to the members, and therefore I request that the Secretary-General be instructed to read the title of the bill.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The Secretary-General is directed to read the title of House Bill Number 8269.
House Bill Number 8269, An Act Protecting the Rights of Internally Displaced Persons and Penalizing the Acts of Arbitrary Internal Displacement.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we recognize the Honorable Bienvenido Abante to deliver his sponsorship.
The Honorable Bienvenido Abante is recognized to sponsor the measure.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker, finally. But, Mr. Speaker, before I sponsor the bill, I would like to rise first on the question of personal privilege.
Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, the air conditioning unit of this house is centralized, and, Mr. Speaker, masyadong malamig. Kami'ming mga malalabnaong dugo, and nanginginig na dito, including our offices. Mr. Speaker, I was trying to rest before coming here, and I cannot because it was too cold. I would want that we make some adjustments on this, Mr. Speaker.
The request of the honorable gentleman is well noted by the Secretary-General.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Now, I'd like to sponsor this very important bill, Mr. Speaker. When I saw the top brass of the Philippine National Police with us, I thought that they came over here to observe the deliberation of this bill, because this is a very controversial bill to talk about. Of course, I am referring to the House Bill Number 8269 with the Committee Report Number 580 on the Rights of Internally Displaced Persons Act. Let me first of all quote from the Book of Psalms, Mr. Speaker, in Psalms 82 and verse number three, and I quote, "Defend the poor and fatherless; do justice to the afflicted and needy." A very appropriate and relevant words indeed, coming from the Holy Bible. So, Honorable Speaker, my esteemed colleagues, and the numerous authors of the bills that are being presented today in this August chamber, I exhort, please, all of you to support the passage of House Bill Number 8269 entitled, "An Act Protecting the Rights of Internally Displaced Persons and Penalizing the Acts of Arbitrary Internal Displacement." That's the title of the bill, Mr. Speaker. I will be explaining, perhaps in exhaustive detail, Mr. Speaker, the substance of the bill, so that whoever would plan to interpolate will not interpolate anymore, Mr. Speaker. Now... Eighteen years after this bill was initially conceived, it has gone through several refinements, which have made the bill more relevant, responsive, and comprehensive, enough to address the recurring issues brought about by massive internal displacements in the country. Along with the other marginalized and vulnerable sectors in our society, internally displaced persons have suffered the brunt of conflicts and violence, and the wrath of man-made and natural disasters. An internally displaced person, or IDP, Mr. Speaker and my dear colleagues, as defined internationally and in the bill, refers to, and I quote, "any person or group of persons who has or have been forced or obliged to flee or to leave their homes or places of habitual residence within the national borders, and who have not crossed on internationally-recognized state border as a result of or in order to avoid or minimize the effects of armed conflicts, situations of generalized and/or organized violence, violation of human rights, implementation of development projects, clan wars, natural, human-induced, and human-made hazards," end of quote. IDPs may be the lesser-known people from among the vulnerable sectors, such as persons with disabilities, indigenous people, and cultural communities, but the IDPs comprise the biggest chunk of the vulnerable sector, that also includes women and children, PWDs, IPs, farmers, fisherfolks, and practically anybody who are affected by conflict, violence, and disasters. As reported in the 2023 Global Report of the Internal Displacement Monitoring Committee, the Philippines yielded, Mr. Speaker, in 2022, a total of 123,000 IDPs due to conflict and violence, and some 5,000, 5 million, rather, 445,000 IDPs as a result of disasters, Mr. Speaker. Our country ranks second among the top five countries, having the highest figures on internal displacements triggered by disasters, both weather-related hazards and geophysical hazards. Others include Pakistan as the highest. Next to us is China, followed by India, and then Nigeria. From a global snapshot, Mr. Speaker and my dear colleagues, the same report stated that there has been a total of 71.1 million IDPs at the end of 2022. A record-high data gathered from some 110 countries and territories, which the IDMC attributed to, as I quote, "rapidly escalating conflict and violence in countries such as Ukraine and Democratic Republic of the Congo, and significant disasters such as flooding in Pakistan in 2022," end of quote. These reports should raise a resounding alarm that game-changing policies must be put in place to reduce the number of IDPs in every state, and more urgently, in our beloved country. As stated in Principle III of the United Nations Guiding Principle on Internal Displacement, it says, and I quote, "National authorities have the primary duty and responsibility to provide protection and humanitarian assistance to internally displaced persons within their jurisdiction," end of quote. Moreover, human rights law obligates, again, and I quote, "state authorities to respect human rights by not interfering with one's exercise of civil, political, economic, social, and cultural rights, to protect them by preventing foreseeable violations by private parties, and to fulfill them through positive measures facilitating their exercise. In cases in which states fail to meet these obligations, they are required to provide effective remedies that serve to rehabilitate those adversely affected, guarantee that such violations will not recur, and hold accountable those responsible," end of quote. Thus, this bill, Mr. Speaker. House Bill 8269 was crafted in a manner that is consistent with the principles and shrine in the 1987 Constitution, the standards under international humanitarian law, human rights law, and international customary law, as well as international treaties and conventions to which the Philippines has adhered to. It adapts, as a state policy, a human rights-based approach for the promotion and protection of the rights of IDPs in situations of armed conflict, generalized and/or organized violence, clan wars, violations of human rights, implementation of development projects, natural, human-induced, and human-made hazards. When armed conflict of a non-international character is inevitable, the state shall ensure the promotion and protection of the rights of the citizens who are non-competent and who shall enjoy in full equality the same rights and freedom under international and domestic law as to other persons in the country. These citizens shall not be discriminated against in the enjoyment of any rights and freedoms on the ground that they are internally displaced, such as we have the example of the Marami-Mrawi incident, Mr. Speaker. The proposed act primarily provides for the protection of rights of IDPs during and after displacement, as well as their safe, voluntary, and dignified return, local integration, or resettlement elsewhere in the country. It likewise covers arbitrary internal displacement of civilians, which has been defined as, I quote, "an act of displacement or any other coercive act committed by any person or groups of persons, and directed against the civilian population, which is contrary to law, good morals, public order, or public policy, or committed with abuse of authority, oppressive or one-ton disregard of the right to life, liberty, or property, and above the residence, whether permanent or temporary, of an area in which they are lawfully present, which causes displacement," end of quote. "And characterized by situations falling under the prohibited acts. The following rights of the IDPs, Mr. Speaker, such as provision and access to basic necessities like food and nutrition, water and hygiene facilities, shelter and housing, legal assistance, clothing, and medical and dental services, among others, shall be protected and upheld during and after their displacement whether found inside or outside evacuation centers. The government shall also provide for IDPs' health and education, protect their properties and possessions, and ensure active participation in the planning and management of their displacement, as well as return, local integration, or settlement elsewhere. The IDPs shall also be protected against criminal offenses and other unlawful acts such as murder, hostage-taking, direct or indiscriminate attacks of or other acts of violence, starvation as a method of combat, their being used to shield military objectives from attack, and other offenses. Penalties ranging from reclusion temporal in its minimum to medium period shall be imposed upon any person or group of persons who directly commit the act of arbitrary internal displacement, and other prohibited acts as defined in the bill, as well as prision mayor in its minimum period, for those who attempt to commit the offense of arbitrary internal displacement. Every IDP has the right to liberty of movement and the right to choose residence and move freely in and out of any evacuation center, encampment, or other settlements, and has the right to family unity and reunification whenever displacement has caused the separation of its members. Mr. Speaker, my dear colleagues, the local government units exercising territorial jurisdiction over the affected area, in collaboration with the national government, the military and law enforcement agencies, Department of Social Welfare and Development, Department of Health, Public Attorney's Office, the local government hospitals, and other appropriate government agencies shall provide immediate relief and humanitarian assistance to IDPs' families and communities. The same authorities, Mr. Speaker, shall have the primary duty and responsibility to establish conditions and provide durable solutions as means for IDPs to return voluntarily in safety and with dignity to their homes or places of habitual residence, or to resettle voluntarily in places of refuge and/or in other parts of the country, taking into consideration the right of IDPs to choose a residence. Another breakthrough in this proposed measure is the crafting of all LGUs of their early recovery plan under the supervision of the Department of the Interior and Local Government. Concomitantly, the Commission on Human Rights has been designated, Mr. Speaker, as the institutional focal point for IDPs, and shall primarily monitor IDP conditions through the development of a system to track their concerns, and shall also formulate a national strategy on solution to internal displacement, which will be presented for adoption by the Inter-Agency Coordinating Committee. An Inter-Agency Coordinating Committee shall be created and tasked to periodically monitor the compliance with this act, and shall be co-headed by the Chairperson of this CHR and the Executive Director of the National Disaster Risk Reduction and Management Council, and with several agencies from the executive department and three representatives from relevant... from relevant non-governmental organizations as members thereof. The IDP shall be provided with financial and non-monetary assistance for their reparations, return, local integration, or resettlement elsewhere, without prejudice to obtaining similar assistance granted under other government programs, such as the Victims Compensation Program of the Department of Justice, DSWD, among others. Finally, Mr. Speaker, my honorable colleagues, as Chairperson of the Committee on Human Rights and one of the principal authors of this bill, together with some 130 members of the House of Representatives who have already signified their support for House Bill 8269, it is our firm belief that the enactment of the Internally Displaced Persons Act must take the center stage and capture all of us at this moment in history as the movers of transformative change, Mr. Speaker. Maraming maraming salamat po, at babuhay tayong lahat.
Thank you very much, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we recognize the Honorable Jude Asidre to deliver his sponsorship speech.
Honorable Jude Asidre is recognized to deliver his sponsorship speech.
Honorable Speaker, dear members of this House, I rise before you today to urge your support for House Bill 8269, a bill that seeks to protect the rights of internally displaced persons in our country. As we all know, the issue of internal displacement has become a pressing concern in our nation. Millions of our fellow citizens have been forced to feed their homes due to armed conflict, natural disasters, and other factors beyond their control. These individuals and their families often face severe hardships, including a lack of access to basic necessities such as food, water, and shelter, as well as the risk of violence and exploitation. First and foremost, the bill recognizes that internally displaced persons are entitled to enjoy the same human rights and fundamental freedoms as any other citizen of this nation. This includes the right to life, liberty, and security of person, as well as the right to freedom of movement, access to clean water and sanitation, healthcare, education, and other basic services. To ensure that these rights are upheld and protected, the bill establishes mechanisms for the identification and registration of internally displaced persons, which will enable the government to understand better the scale and the nature of internal displacement in the country and to provide targeted assistance to IDPs. The bill also seeks to ensure that IDPs are able to participate in decision-making processes that affect their lives, including the formulation of policies and programs that impact their welfare. This is critical as IDPs often face marginalization and exclusion from mainstream society, which can further compound their vulnerability and lead to further violations of their human rights. Mr. Speaker, House Bill 8269 provides a comprehensive framework for the protection and assistance of internally displaced persons in our country. From October 2022 to March 2023, the number of displaced persons caused by calamities stood at 64,351, of which 9,816 stayed in evacuation centers and then others outside of evacuation centers. In passing this bill, we will send a strong message to our fellow citizens that the rights and welfare are utmost importance to us. This also demonstrates our commitment to upholding international human rights standards and in fulfilling our obligations under international humanitarian law. Therefore, I urge all of you, my colleagues, to support House Bill 8269 and to help us create a more just and humane society for our fellow citizens, including those who have been internally displaced. Maraming salamat po.
Thank you very much, Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we recognize the Honorable Adyong to deliver his sponsorship speech.
The Honorable Adyong is recognized to deliver his sponsorship speech.
Bismillahirohmanirohim, salamualaikum warahmatullahi talahi wabarakatuh. Mr. Speaker, honorable members of the House of Representatives, I express my gratitude for the privilege of joining my colleagues Chairman Abante and my fellow author of this measure Congressman Asidre in sponsoring House Bill Number 2826 under Committee Report Number 580, or an act protecting the rights of internally displaced persons. Mr. Speaker, coming from an area wherein voluntary displacement, often caused by human-induced calamity or armed conflict, I understand through our lived experience, Mr. Speaker, that the issue of internal displacement affects millions of people around the globe, including here in our country. The words "ondoy," "Yolanda," "Marawi Siege" evoke moving images in the collective memories of our countrymen. Homes and workplaces destroyed, belongings lost, and lives devastated. Our country is no stranger to disasters, Mrs. Speaker, natural or man-made. The Internal Displacement Monitoring Center estimates that in 2021 alone, there were 140,000 IDPs in the Philippines in this country who have been forced to flee their homes due to conflict, violence, and natural disasters. This forms part, Mr. Speaker, of 5,681,000 cases of internal displacement in the country. These IDPs face significant challenges in accessing their rights, including basic needs such as food, shelter, and healthcare, as well as protection from violence and discrimination. Despite the provisions in our constitution that mandate the government to value the dignity of every person and guarantees full respect of human rights, there remains a critical gap in terms of implementation and enforcement. Mr. Speaker, this bill seeks to address these gaps by providing a legal framework for the protection and assistance of IDPs in the country. It draws on international legal frameworks such as the Guiding Principle on Internal Displacement developed by the United Nations to ensure that the rights and needs of the IDPs are respected and protected. As the U.N. Guiding Principles on Internal Displacement state, and I quote, "Internally displaced persons are entitled to the same rights and freedoms under international and domestic laws as other persons in their country." This means, Mr. Speaker, that IDPs should not be discriminated against based on their displacement status and should have access to basic needs such as food, shelter, and healthcare. Furthermore, Mrs. Speakers, under Section 11, Article 2 of the Philippine Constitution explicitly recognizes the rights of IDPs, stating, and I quote, "that the state values the dignity of every human person and guarantees full respect for human rights." This constitutional provision, Mr. Speaker, is a critical step towards ensuring that the rights of IDPs are respected and protected. It declares further, Mrs. Speaker, that the state shall apply a rights-based approach for the promotion and protection of the rights of internally displaced persons in situations of armed conflicts, generalized or organized violence, clan wars, violation of human rights, implementation of development projects, pandemics, natural and human-induced or human-made disasters. This bill, Mrs. Speaker, proposes specific measures to ensure that IDPs have access to basic needs such as shelter, food, and water, as well as healthcare and education. It also mandates the government to provide protection from violence and other abuses and to ensure that IDPs have the right to return to their homes or places of habitual residence, Mrs. Speaker. Mrs. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, I urge you to support this bill and to recognize the urgent need to protect the rights of the Bakwit or the IDPs in our country. By doing so, Mrs. Speaker, we can ensure that our country remains a beacon of hope and justice for those who have been forced to flee their homes and that we uphold the values of human dignity, equality, and justice that are enshrined in our constitution. As representatives of the people, Mr. Speaker, all of us, it is our duty to allocate the necessary resources to uphold the rights and well-being of our fellow citizens. By appropriating the required budget for programs and initiatives that support IDPs, Mrs. Speaker, we can ensure that their basic needs are met, their rights are protected, and their dignity is preserved.
Ang panukalang batas na ito, Mr. Speaker, ay para sa mga Bakwit at para sa lahat ng Pilipinong na ulila mula sa kanilang inan lupa. Ito'y ating munting handog at pagkilala sa mga hirap na kanilang dinadanas. Ito'y pagpapatunay, Mr. Speaker, na ang bawat Pilipino ay may karapatang mamuhay ng marangal at mauntlad dito sa ating bansa. Hinahangad po namin, Mr. Speaker, ang suporta ng kamarang ito. Marami pong salamat, salamualaikum, warahmatullahi talahi wabarakatuh.
Thank you very much to our AAA sponsors, Abante, Asidre, Adyong, for your sponsorship speech. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we recognize the lady from ACT Teachers Party List, the Honorable Franz Castro, for her interpretation.
The Honorable Franz Castro is recognized to interpret the sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Di na sana ako nagmagi-interpelite at magtatanong, pero mga ano lang po, Mr. Speaker, just a clarification of the bill. Generally, we support the bill on the IDP. Ito nga, sinasabi nga ni Congressman Adyong, 'yung mga Bakwit. And this representation, Mr. Speaker, many times, we supported the Bakwits, victims nga ng iba't ibang mga ano, dahilan, like calamities and human-induced activities or reasons. Okay, dito lang po, Mr. Speaker, just a clarification and ano, manifestation. Ilan po sa nakita natin, recently, that causes internally displaced persons sa ating mga communities, Mr. Speaker, ay 'yung mga violations po na nagaganap sa ating mga communities, especially in the rural areas, like military encampment and forced surrenderes. One of the major reasons bakit po merong mga IDPs. So ito po 'yung mga napansin natin, recently, na nagiging dahilan na mga IDPs. So, just a clarification po, on Section 7. On Section 7, Mr. Speaker, on the additional persons from the society organizations that those who provide humanitarian assistance to IDPs should be also protected. So dito po ba sa ating bill, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, 'yung din po bang mga napoprotekta or tumutulong doon sa ating mga IDPs ay protected din po ba dito sa ating bill, Mr. Speaker?
Well, Mr. Speaker, Your Honor, as long as they're non-combatant, why not? Kasama sila ang lahat yan, as far as the protection of the IDPs is concerned, yes.
Yes, 'yan nga po 'yung ano ko, 'yung sa sinad na tanong ko. Kasi in general, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, yun pong mga ginagawa halimbawa na mga vilification, political persecution, which is under RA 9851, kabilang na rin dito 'yung ginagawang mga red tagging at saka 'yung terrorist labeling. So ito'y madalas 'yung ginagawang weigh-in para itratong combatant ang mga sibilyan, lalong-lalo na 'yung mga tumutulong din. Okay, so isa pong konkretong example, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, ito po 'yung magiging, tinitignan nating magiging loophole dito sa ating batas na nakakaligtas po, Mr. Speaker, 'yung mga military, police, or other security forces and other state agent, especially on Section 8B. Ibig sabihin, 'yung mga acts like pulling IDPs out of their sanctuaries will not be considered as prohibited once they claim that safety and security of civilians and non-combatants are involved or imperative military reasons or demands. So, ano po 'yung masasabi natin dito. And additional note po, doon sa persecution under the RA 9851, 'yung Philippine Act of Crimes Against International Humanitarian Law, Genocide and Other Crimes and Other Humanity, persecution is a crime against humanity, an act against any identifiable group or collectivity on political, rational, ethnic, cultural, religious, gender, sexual orientation, or other grounds that are universally recognized as impermissible under the international law in connection with any act referred to this paragraph. And Act Number 3, proposal po dito on Section 23, 'yung role ng CHR. So 'yung sinasabi lang natin, Mr. Speaker, yun pong act of vilification, yung political persecution na ngayon ay ginagawa na mga security forces natin. So ito po ba ay kasama doon sa sinasabi nating unlawful acts na nakalagay po dito dun sa Section 6 ng ating panukalang batas?
Yes, Mrs. Speaker, Your Honor, palagay ko, itong bill na ito is very exhaustive as far as the protection of the IDPs is concerned. Nabanggit ko po 'yan lahat, dito sa aking sponsorship speech, Mrs. Speaker, na lahat po 'yang kasama hindi pwedeng, hindi ho kasama ang mga talagang nakikita nating mga displaced na mga persons po. Kasama po lahat 'yan, exhaustive po 'yan.
Yes, in a proper time, Mr. Speaker, dahil wala ito doon sa nakalagay, nakalagay po dito sa ating panukalang batas, 'yung vilification at saka 'yung political persecution. So later, Mr. Speaker, maiba dagdag po natin 'yan doon sa attacks against the IDPs, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah. Thank you.
Kasi isa rin po, Mr. Speaker, na situation, pwede rin kasi sabihin na merong mga encounter, kahit wala namang encounter, kaya nali-legitimate 'yung mga displacement nung ating mga kababayan doon sa lugar. Ito lagi, 'yung line na ginagamit ng AFP, mga state agencies, at saka ng NTFL Cup. At maalala rin natin, Mr. Speaker, isa sa mga observation ni Cheloka Beyani. Ito 'yung special rapport tour on human rights of internally displaced persons. Noong bumisita siya sa Pilipinas at inimbisigahan ang mga kaso na mga IDP. Kabilang na dito 'yung mga lumad, particular 'yung sinasabi nating mga Bakwit, okay, na nagbabakwit po sila at kinakalung po sila nung mga churches, like 'yung mga UCCP and other churches. So 'yung mga indigenous peoples displacement, sabi po, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, nung atin pong U.N. Rapporteur, nung nagpunta dito, nung August 12, 2015. Ikocote ko na lang po 'yung part. Ang sabi niya po dito, and I quote, "I heard..." "I heard from the AFP its assertion that it's seeking to protect the communities and provide services to them in conflict regions. However, the displaced IDPs made it clear that it is their presence and that of the paramilitary groups in their communities that continues to create anxiety among indigenous communities." 'Yung presence po ng mga military, 'yung presence po ng mga paramilitary doon sa kanilang lugar, ito po daw 'yung nagcocause 'nung anxiety base po doon sa napag-alaman 'nung rapport tour. "So the community wishes to return to its lands, but stressed to me that they will only feel safe to do so if the long-term militarization of their region comes to an end and they can return with guarantees of safety, dignity, and protection. They described to me their concerns, including their alleged forced recruitment into paramilitary groups known as Alamar under the auspices of the AFP and the harassment in the context of ongoing conflict between AFP and the NPA. Schools have reportedly been closed and occupied by AFP or Alamar hampering the access to education and indigenous children." So ang tanong ko po, Mr. Speaker, dito po ba sa ating Panukalang Batas, paano po kaya mapoproteksyonan 'yung ating mga communities? Nitong mga, whether, siyempre, military man 'yan, or paramilitary, or other forces, na talagang hindi po magiinterfere doon sa communities? Kasi 'yun din po 'yung kinakatakutan 'nung ating mga kababayan, especially sa rural areas, kung bakit napipilitan po silang mag-backwit?
Mrs. Speaker, Your Honor, napanggit ko po 'yan sa aking speech, no, pero gusto ko lang pong linawin na nakalagay sa Section 8 ng bill natin, assistance during displacement of IDPs. Na ang sabi dito, the primary duty and responsibility for providing humanitarian assistance to IDPs lie with state. Oho, kaya nga po, the national government will be in close collaboration with the LGUs. 'Yan po 'yung nakalagay sa Section 8, ah, makiki-alam po 'yung LGU rito. Pero katulad din po ng mga aensya ng gobyerno na dapat maprotekta, whether they be military or law enforcement agencies, or the DSWD, TOH, magtutulong-tulong po lahat ng mga ito upang protektahan natin ang mga IDPs. Nakalagay din po sa Section 8, "Humanitarian assistance to IDPs shall not be diverted, suspended, or diverted for any political or military reason." Kaya't natanggal po natin dito ang any form of political and military reason as far as humanitarian assistance to IDPs is concerned.
Yes, medyo ano po, no, kasi ang tanong ko po, Mr. Speaker, doon po, distinguished sponsor, paano po natin kaya matitiyak ng ating batas na... Kasi sinabi dito, no, isa sa naging observations 'nung ating rapport tour, 'nung rapport tour ng UN, na 'yung presence ng mga military doon sa mga communities natin. So 'yun ang nagbibigay sa kanila ng, ano, 'yun po 'yung nagbibigay sa kanila ng anxiety, stress, at napipilitan po na mag-backwit 'yung ating mga kababayan dahil sila ay binibilify, nire-red tag, tine-terrorist tagging. So 'yun po 'yung ginagawa doon sa community. So paano po kaya mapoprotektahan nitong ating bill? 'Yung mga ganung situation po ng ating mga mamamayan sa community?
Naiintindihan ko po ang concern ni Congresswoman Franz Castro, Mr. Speaker, Your Honor. And wala namang po dito sa atin na perfect law, di ba? I mean, walang perfect law, wala namang tayong perfect agency na hindi natin makikita ang ilang mga abuses. But because of this bill, we might and try to avoid these abuses in the future, Mr. Speaker, Your Honor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor. So bali, sa nakikita po natin, ang point po, Mr. Speaker, hindi natin maaring iswalo, hook, line, and sinker o paniwalaan agad-agad lamang, 'yung mga claims ng military with regard to displacement. At kung papakinggan natin 'yung mga biktima na mga displacement, sila 'yung mga napipilitang umalis sa mga ancestral domains nila. Halimbawa, lalabas ang katotohanan madalas ang mga taong militar, mga militarisasyon, at militaristang pagtatarget sa mga sibilyang komunidad sa tabing ng civic military operations. O kahalintulad ng linya ng mismong dahilan ng internal displacement. So halimbawa, Mr. Speaker, sinasabi lang, ididiklara lang na itong lugar na ito ay merong mga, ano, civic military operation. So 'yung ating mga kababayan ay napipilitang mag-displace. Tinawag nga ito ng special rapport tour bilang manipulation of their situation by any party, government, or non-governmental. 'Yung pagpapalaganap ng linyang may militar sa mga katutubong lupain dahil pinuprotektahan ang militar, at paramilitary ang mga lumad o ano mang indigenous people. So 'yun po ang impresyon, ano, doon sa observations na nakuha natin dito sa speech po, or part ng speech, or part ng observation noong UN rapport tour. So sa tabing lang po ng civil-military operations, nadidisplace 'yung ating mga kababayan.
Nabanggit ko po, Mr. Speaker, Your Honor, ang mga proteksyon na ito, pero nakalagay po dito sa ating bill, no, Section 6B. Ang entitled po nito is "Protection Against Criminal Offenses and Other Unlawful Acts." Ito po ito, from one, marami po dito, "It shall be unlawful to commit any of the following acts against IDPs." Oho, murder, hostage-taking, kung ano pa, attacks on other acts of violence against IDPs. Oho, direct or indiscriminate attacks or other acts of violence against IDPs. Kaya, magkikita po niyo rito ang proteksyon against criminal offenses and other unlawful acts done to IDPs. And besides that, Mr. Speaker, meron taman tayong mga korte, aside from this bill, that we can resort to. Again, Mr. Speaker, I will not in any way assure our good Congresswoman that everything will be done smoothly and accordingly. Because the nature of man has always the nature of violence in it, no? The nature of man always has the nature of ekanga, badness. But we have laws that would protect us from those, Mr. Speaker, Your Honor.
So, thank you, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor. 'Yun lang po 'yung mga clarification natin, ano, kasi 'yun lang po 'yung vague sa akin dito sa Panukalang Batas na ito. Dahil 'yun po 'yung present na nangyayari ngayon sa ating mga kababayan na dahil sa persecution, vilification, red tagging, terrorist tagging, ay talagang, ano, napipilitan na mag-backwit. At it takes time po, tama naman eh, na magtiwala doon sa ating hustisya, pero it takes time. Halimbawa po, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, maraming mga, ano, mga nabibilify na mga IP, maraming, especially 'yung mga pinasarang mga schools po, na ngayon, ilang taon nagrun 'yung kaso at nadismiss itong mga kaso na ito. Pero nakagawa na po ng injustice doon sa ating mga kababayan. Lalong-lalo na po 'yung mga IP, students, napasaray 'yung mga school, napalaya sila sa kanilang mga komunidad. 'Yung iba po, hanggang ngayon, nakakulong pa dahil po doon sa sinasabi natin na mga violence or acts against doon sa ating mga indigenous people na nagre-resulta rin doon sa kanilang displacement.
Salamat po sa inyong concern, Mrs. Speaker, Your Honor. At naniniwala ako, with this bill, I believe that we ought to be encouraged more to be vigilant sa lahat ng mga bagay na ito, whether it is the government or private people, Mr. Speaker. I believe that we should be more vigilant so that these things would not anymore happen.
Okay, thank you po, Mr. Speaker, and in due time po, magkakaroon po ako ng amendments.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no member who is to interpret, I now move that we close the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The period of sponsorship and debate is hereby terminated. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we open the period of amendments.
Chair any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, there being no committee amendments, I now move that we close the period for committee amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we recognize the Honorable Franz Castro for individual amendments.
Honorable Franz Castro is recognized for individual amendments.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Speaker. So may I propose, Mr. Speaker, some of the individual amendments that we have, like on Section 7 and Section 6, add persons, we add civil society organization as those who provide humanitarian assistance to IDPs and thus are protected under those sections. To it, insert in the last paragraph of the sections, "The guarantees under this section shall likewise not be denied to civil society organizations, people organizations, and similar groups who extend assistance to the IDPs."
I want to accept, Mr. Speaker, Your Honor.
Thank you very much to the sponsor. What does the House say?
Mrs. Speaker, I move to adopt the amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The individual amendment is hereby adopted.
Thank you, distinguished sponsor. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. On Section 7 in lines 36 to 37, page 10, delete the military and law enforcement agencies conducting operations.
Can I have a one-minute suspension and just let confer with the trio, Mr. Speaker?
Yes, session suspended. Session is resumed.
Mr. Speaker.
Sponsor is recognized.
Much as I value the concern and the sentiments of my good friend, Congresswoman Franz, we disagree with the amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Does the Honorable Franz Castro insist on this individual amendment?
I just accept, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, we'll proceed.
Okay, in my next amendment, Mr. Speaker, in general, insert and express inclusion in the bill, vilification, political persecution, which is already under 9851, and also those, vilification, political persecution, red tagging, or terrorist labeling.
Mrs. Speaker, Your Honor, I did not hear any amendment to that, except that you said that insert, no? So we cannot actually do anything about it.
Okay.
Perhaps you could just be able to connect with the Senate when they begin deliberate on this bill.
So in particular, Mr. Speaker, I would like to propose to insert in Section 8B after the word "demand," line 17, page 11, to it, "Subject to the power of the CHR under Section 22."
Section 8?
Section 8B.
B.
Yes. Section 8B, Mr. Speaker, after the word "demand" on page 11, line 16 and 17, which is, ano, subject to the, insert, or after the word "demand", "Subject to the power of the CHR under Section 22."
One-minute suspension, Mrs. Speaker.
Granted. Session suspended. Session is resumed. Chair recognizes the sponsor.
Mr. Speaker, the lead agency of this bill would be the Commission of Human Rights, no? So I don't think that there is actually any need to put this in, Mr. Speaker. So again, we disagree with the amendment.
Thank you. Does Honorable Franz Castro insist on her proposed amendment?
Okay, no more, Mr. Speaker. I'll just go to my next amendment.
Okay, please proceed.
Okay, on Section 22J, line 23, page 17, and insert in Section 22K, the word "end." A delete "end" pala, Mr. Speaker, doon sa, ano, Section 22J, line 23, page 17, and insert in Section 22K, 'yung "end."
Delete "end"?
Delete the word "end" in Section 22J, line 23, page 17, and insert in Section 22K, the word "end" on line 26, page 17.
Insert the word?
Parang ano lang to, Mr. Speaker, style.
Mr. Speaker, I want just to make it clear, no? You said that you would like to delete the word "end." Do you want to add something to it, Mr. Speaker, as another, as another line or paragraph?
Okay, Section 22J.
Yeah, Section 22K.
Oh, yeah.
You would like to add the word "end."
Delete "end."
Are you going to add another letter?
No, parang ano lang, Mr. Speaker, distinguished sponsor, parang didelete natin 'yung, ano, 'yung "end" doon sa, ano, 22J, line 23, and insert in Section 22K, yoon "end" sa line 26, page 17.
So, letter J.
Yeah.
You want to delete the word "end," and then in K, you want to add the word "end."
Yeah.
Is that what you're trying to say?
Mm-mm.
"end," and I would like to ask, no, just some clarification here, no? "end," it means that you would like to add another letter to it. Am I right?
Okay, may I read, Mr. Speaker, 'nung letter J, line 22 to 23, "To hold public information drives on the protection and rights of IDPs and foster their participation and decision-making process regarding issues that concerns them." "end," di ba?
Oho, delete 'yan.
Okay. "Tapos, to carry out such other acts that may be necessary to fully implement the purpose of this act." So dadagdag natin. so dadagdag natin 'yung "end".
Dadagdag 'yung "end". And then what is the next statement?
Yun na po, line 26, nung page 17.
Line 26. Kasi ang inaano ko dito, Mr. Speaker, honor, pag sinabi nating dagdagan ng "end", 'yung "K", ibig sabihin, you are going to add another provision to this. Meron po ba kayong idadagdag?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Meron tayong mga idadagdag for this on Section, ano no, Section 22, sa subsection, letter "L",
Uh-huh.
Oo. "To investigate the legitimacy of the imperative military reasons or the factual or legal basis of the existence of an order of battle or any similar documents or inclusion of specific persons or groups in said orders or documents."
Considering, Mr. Speaker, your honor, that this is not within the mandate of the Commission of Human Rights, being the lead agency in this bill, we do not want to accept the amendment.
Sponsor disagrees?
I accept, Mr. Speaker.
Okay.
For my last amendments, Mr. Speaker, in Section 3, letter "H", insert a last portion of Section 3, letter "H", ekama, and then proviso, and I quote, "provided that durable solutions are always understood to be determined upon consultation with the internally displaced persons and communities as well as the groups and individuals assisting them."
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
What does the House say?
We move to adopt the amendment.
Okay. Any objection? Chair hears none. The individual amendment is approved.
Okay, that's all, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, Distinguished Sponsor.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we close the period for individual amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I now move that we vote on second reading House Bill Number 8269, as contained in Committee Report Number 580.
There is a motion to approve House Bill Number 8269 on second reading. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those again say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 8269 is hereby approved on second reading. Congratulations. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we proceed with additional reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the titles of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports for referral to the appropriate committees.
Additional reference of business. Resolution. House Resolution 1056. Resolution strengthening mutual cooperation between the Philippines and Korea through the Philippines-Korea Parliamentarian Friendship Association by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Dalipe Libanan, Marcos Romualdes Yeddo Marie, and Labad Labad.
To the Committee on Rules.
Committee Reports. Committee Report Number 642, submitted by the Committee on Tourism on House Bill 8447. Committee Report Numbers 643 and 644, submitted by the Committee on Higher and Technical Education and the Committee on Appropriations on House Bill Numbers 8448 and 8449 respectively.
To the Committee on Rules.
Additional reference of business. Committee Reports. Committee Report Number 645, submitted by the Committee on Higher and Technical Education and the Committee on Appropriations on House Bill Number 8450.
To the Committee on Rules.
Committee Report Number 646, submitted by the Committee on Higher and Technical Education and the Committee on Appropriations on House Bill Number 8451.
To the Committee on Rules.
Committee Report Number 647, submitted by the Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation and the Committee on Appropriations on House Bill Number 8452.
To the Committee on Rules.
Committee Report Number 648, submitted by the Committee on Energy, the Committee on Appropriations, and the Committee on Ways and Means on House Bill Number 8456.
To the Committee on Rules.
Committee Report Number 649, submitted by the Committee on Culture and Fisheries Resources and the Committee on Appropriations on House Bill Number 8457.
To the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, the House and the Senate have approved on third reading House Bill Number 7909 and Senate Bill Number 2219 respectively on extending the validity of the Estate Tax Amnesty Act. We have been informed that the Committee on Ways and Means, sponsor of House Bill Number 7909, as well as the authors thereof, are in concurrence with the provisions of Senate Bill Number 2219. With this information and in accordance with our rules, I move that we adopt Senate Bill Number 2219 as an amendment to House Bill Number 7909.
There is a motion to adopt Senate Bill Number 2219 as amended to House Bill Number 7919. Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The motion is approved. Senate Bill Number 2219 is adopted and as an amendment to House Bill Number 7909. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, with leave of the House, I move that we reconsider the approval on second reading of House Bill Number 7362.
In accordance to Section 59 of the Rules of the House? Oh, please proceed.
My apologies, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, in accordance to Section 59 of the Rules of the House, I move that we recommit House Bill Number 7362 to the Special Committee on Reforestation.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we include additional authors to House Bill Numbers 8265, 8327, 8400, 8443, and 8456 and House Resolution Numbers 1028 and 1056, as contained in the list to be submitted by the Committee on Rules.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now consider House Bill Number 8443 as contained in Committee Report Number 641, submitted by the Committee on Natural Resources. Copies of the bill have been previously distributed to the members. I request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bill under consideration.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill Number 8443.
House Bill Number 8443. An Act Institutionalizing the Philippine Ecosystem and Natural Capital Accounting System Mandating Its Use in Policy and Decision-Making, Designating the Agencies Responsible for Its Implementation, Providing Institutional Arrangements Among Responsible Agencies, and Appropriating Funds Therefore.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Representative Kiko Benitez to sponsor the measure.
Honorable Kiko Benitez is recognized to sponsor the measure. Please proceed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, on behalf of Chairperson Elpideo Barzaga Jr. and the Committee on Natural Resources and the other principal authors of this measure, it is my honor to present to this august body House Bill Number 8443, contained in Committee Report Number 641, which will institutionalize the Philippine ecosystem and natural capital accounting system. House Bill Number 8443 consolidates House Bill 73, 2604, 8075, and 8117, authored by myself, Representatives Antonio A.A. Legarda, Luis Raymond El Rey Villia Fuerte, Chuyoshi Anthony Joribata, Brian Raymond Yamsoan, and Brother Eddie Villanueva. This measure has a counterpart bill in the Senate, Senate Bill Number 9, filed by Senator Lauren Legarda, and is a ledak priority of the DNR. Mr. Speaker, this bill is crucial in ensuring that development does not damage or deplete our natural resources. This bill is designed to safeguard our natural patrimony and ensure that our children and our future generations will benefit from the abundance of nature. In the race to the bottom to increase production and accelerate business growth, we generally exploit our natural environment as raw material. We forget that nature provides us invisible life-sustaining services such as air filtration, groundwater recharge, carbon sequestration, benefits that are lost when we shave our forests, when we mine and poison our rivers and oceans, when we destroy our wildlife. For the last couple hundred years, industrialization has made man a master of nature. We have conquered the powers of nature, whether from steam or electricity or oil, and have turned nature into a resource we can control and consume, turning it into a material and a commodity from which we extract to create our wealth. In creating wealth with blatant disregard for natural and planetary systems, we burn and waste our natural capital. And our current environmental crisis of climate change and biodiversity loss are nature's way of responding to the anthropocene's rapacious modes and make truly sustainable development difficult for all. And we generally do not realize this because we do not account what is lost and what remains. This bill, Mr. Speaker, will change this. House Bill Number 8443 compels us to rethink our view of nature as a tool for development. Natural ecosystems are integral and inseparable part of humanity, just as humanity is an integral part of nature. We are nature. Nature are not separate of us. Dear colleagues, Mr. Speaker, we must learn to properly evaluate, to properly value nature in all senses of the word. The Philippine Ecosystem and Natural Capital Accounting System, or PNCAS, is a mechanism for collecting data on our natural resources and evaluating our environmental assets, including ecosystem services. PNCAS will also take into account the cost of degradation and depletion of natural ecosystems. And altogether, these values will be made integral to our macroeconomic analyses to enable us to see the big picture, the true state of our economy, and to make development efforts more clearly sustainable and ideally as harmonious with nature as possible. PNCAS will allow us to make sure trade-offs and offsets in costs to natural capital and ecosystem services are clear to one and all. Mr. Speaker, natural capital accounting is one of the priority interventions identified in the Philippine Development Plan of 2023 to 2028 to build a resilient economy. PNCAS is vital to monitoring the interaction between environment, society, and the economy, providing the bridge between our current economic planning methods and the needs of conserving and managing our natural resources, and shall help us in our international commitments to the 2015 Paris Agreement on Climate Change and the National Climate Change Action Plan, among others. This bill also builds upon the roadmap to institutionalize natural capital accounting in the Philippines, a landmark document prepared by NEDA, PSA, and DNR to embed the concept and methodology of environmental economic accounting in our bureaucracy. This mechanism is by no means new, Mr. Speaker. In fact, as early as 1997 through Executive Order 406, an environment and natural resources accounting system was already in place. But statistical methodologies and natural capital concepts have since changed. This bill will localize the system of environmental economic accounting as endorsed by the United Nations Statistics Commission and will also provide institutional funding for PNCAS. Previous natural capital accounting mechanisms have had to be externally funded. This bill will mobilize funding to fully operationalize and institutionalize PNCAS as integral to development planning in as many government agencies as possible. Lastly, Mr. Speaker, PNCAS will inform planning and programming toward increasing the resilience of our ecosystems and our communities. This will support one of our ambition 192040 objectives of ensuring ecological integrity and improving the socio-economic condition of the environment and the natural resources-dependent communities through enhanced ecosystem services. Indeed, we must determine the value of our natural assets to understand how high the cost is when we willingly allow for its destruction. The long-term impact of environmental change in our economy and social order must appear in our developmental models so that we prevent worse ecological disaster and the corresponding disruptions to our food security and water systems and the social unrest that come with poverty, environmental vulnerability, and precariousness. Mr. Speaker, we must value our natural capital, conserve our natural heritage for the benefit of future generations. After all, we are not masters of the earth, but stewards of nature. Again, on behalf of Chairperson Elpideo Barzaga and the members of the Committee on Natural Resources and the other authors of this important bill, on behalf of Mother Earth and Inang Kalakasan, I urge this august body to approve House Bill Number 8443. Maraming salamat po sa inyong lahat.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Representative Raúl Daniel A. Manuel of Kabataan Portales for his interpolation.
Representative Manuel is recognized to interpolate the sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Would the good sponsor be willing to answer questions from this representation?
It would be a pleasure, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, nais nating mas maunawaan. In basic terms, how will the database be used up? Ano ang primary na intensyon ang pagbubuo natin itong database under the PNCAS?
Ang pagbubuo kasi meron household na itatayo ang DNR, ang PSA, at ang NEDA para po mag-inventaryo ng ating natural resources at gumawa po ng iba't-ibang klaseng asset accounts as well as iba't-ibang klaseng flow accounts na tinatawag pag ating ginagamit ang ecosystem services ng iba't-ibang lugar po sa Pilipinas. May nag-identify na po sila ng iba't-ibang critical ecosystems na kailangan nating i-assess, i-inventaryo, at bigyan po ng halaga para po ang degradation nito ay balang araw ay pwede rin nating masagot, with a clear sense of its economic value.
Mr. Speaker, may we know from our sponsor, ano ang ilang halimbawa ng mga identified critical ecosystems na meron tayo sa ngayon?
For example, the DNR has identified, among others, the Masinloko Yun Bay Protected Landscape and Seascape, Laguna de Bay, the Puerto Princesa Subterranean River National Park, Western Samar, the Province of Iluilo, and so on and so forth, Mr. Speaker.
With that, Mr. Speaker, may we know from our sponsor, how does the Environmental Economic Accounting System assign value? Paano natin nabibigyan ng halaga 'yung iba't-ibang components ng mga ecosystems?
Depende po sa component ng ecosystem, and depende po sa klase ng... and depende po sa klase ng asset na pag-uusapan. Halimbawa po, kung ang pag-uusapan natin ay whether or not we can align with an international agreements on carbon trading. So there will have to be a system to account for the amount of carbon sequestration of a specific hectare, for example, of mangrove forests in order to then be able to offset and/or value how much that might cost in an international carbon sequestration trading platform might be, for example. Pero totoo po at tama po siguro ang iniisip ng ating kagalang-galang na representante ng kabataan na ito po ay hindi pa kompleto na pag-aaral. Sa ngayon, ang international systems and international structures in order to properly evaluate ay sa totoo lang ay ginagawa pa at hindi pa tapos, hindi pa comprehensive ang system, Mr. Speaker.
With that, Mr. Speaker, we'd like to appreciate more, kung ano 'yung magiging system eventually should this bill become a law. In terms of the principle behind this bill, we would want to understand, kung paano ba natin natitingnan 'yung components na nasa isang ecosystem, will they merely be viewed as goods that ultimately serve human benefit? At paano naman natin natitiyak na ang ganitong mga nasa kalikasan natin ay nakokonseder pa rin natin as living, breathing components of nature na in themselves ay merong value, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, the bill actually says, and if I may be allowed to read it, on the third page, that one of the declarations of policy is precisely what the good gentleman has said, namely that we must understand nature's priceless its intrinsic value and its interdependence in the implementation of policies to consider that nature and ecosystems have inherent rights to exist themselves with an end view of recognizing legal rights that serve to protect endangered ecosystems and applying the precautionary principle, especially when economic values cannot be properly estimated, Mr. Speaker.
With that, Mr. Speaker, kapag meron tayong PNCAS or itong Philippine Ecosystems and Natural Capital Accounting System, ito ba ay irequire na gamitin kapag halimbawa magpapatayo ng infrastructure project or kung ano mga proyekto na naisip pa tayo ng ating national government or ng ating local government units?
Mr. Speaker, that is in part, partly, what the PNCAS is held, is intended to provide, a system by which that might be done logically and systematically. So yes, Mr. Speaker.
How binding will the PNCAS be, Mr. Speaker? Is it a mere recommendation na dapat ibahagi ng mga studies prior to starting a project? Or are our agencies bound to follow kung ano man 'yung nais na irecommend ng numbers mula doon sa PNCAS?
Mr. Speaker, this one, I must confess, is not within the scope of the bill. The scope of the bill is really just to create the environmental and ecosystem accounts and do an inventory of our assets. The implementation of it with regards to how binding this might be is not, in fact, really covered yet in this bill, Mr. Speaker.
With that, Mr. Speaker, I am interested to know, paano halimbawa 'yung mga ecosystems or environmental areas na mababa 'yung kanilang valuation? For example, based dun sa computation at ang ating reference naman ay 'yung PNCAS, eh di nakitang low value 'yung isang ecosystem. Tapos, if it is compared to a project na based on our computations dahil sa magiging return of investment, kung sino man 'yung nag-invest, may it be the government or some, someone in the private sector or maybe a partnership, paano kung naturing na high-heeled 'yung proyekto? Ganyan. Tapos yun, dahil 'yung ecosystem kung saan pwedeng itayo 'yung project ay naturing ang low value? So how can we weigh that, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, that is exactly the weighting already, right? If, if in fact, the value of the project versus the value of the ecosystem services provided by a specific location or specific site can be taken into account, then the capacity to offset it to provide another location where a similar ecosystem service might be produced or conducted and/or alternative ways by which it can be compensated, trade-offs and offsets, as I had said, is precisely part of how development projects ought to be analyzed and evaluated moving forward in the presence of the PNCAS bill, Mr. Speaker.
With that, Mr. Speaker, paano natin matitiyak na updated itong nilalaman ng PNCAS? Kasi pwedeng, at the moment, as we speak or habang nag-aasaintay ng values, pwedeng low value 'yung isang ecosystem. Pero hindi pa natin naaabot 'yung capacity as UN beings, of course, with the help of our researchers, scientists. Hindi pa, example, natin nakita na meron palang processes dyan or merong mga elemento or kung ano man na nasa ecosystem na magpapataas pala ng kanyang value at pwedeng sa susunod ng mga generations mapakinabangan nila yun or fully utilize, of course, with the advancements of science, Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, the only way by which the natural capital accounting system can accommodate a very real concern that the gentleman has brought up is to, in fact, have an annual revision, right? And an annual resurvey of the accounts. So whether these accounts have to do with material, having to do with biodiversity, having to do with water, having to do with energy in terms of its ecosystem services, the agency is required to constantly update their accounts. That assumes then that as scientific knowledge moves on, that revision annually would also have to be reevaluated, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. Mr. Speaker, now for my next set of questions. Ito naman ay tungkol sa UN System of Environmental Economic Accounting, or 'yung SEEA. As explained dun sa ating Panokalang Batas, ito 'yung framework that integrates both economic and environmental data to provide a more comprehensive and multipurpose view of the interrelationships between the economy, the environment, and ecosystems and the stocks and changes in stocks of natural assets as they bring benefits to humanity. Ano-ano po, Mr. Speaker, ang specific na mga data na gagamitin at i-integrate doon sa SEEA? Meron na po bang mga data sets na currently available?
Mr. Speaker, very rough ang current data sets. What they have started to do has been to take accounting, as I said, of specific localities and even flesh-out, specific to our local conditions, what that framework may look like. So wala pa po, sa pagkakaalam ko, data set actually ang DNR at ang PSA. Sila po ay nag-uusap pa rin sa ngayon para po ma-iron out ang data set po na hinihingi po ng ating kasama sa kongreso, Mr. Speaker.
With that, Mr. Speaker, while nandyan naman 'yung magadang intent nitong Panokalang Batas, if we are to go a few steps forward, dahil ito nga ay nakabatay na rin sa ilang practices globally, so ibig sabihin ay meron na ring na-identify na ilang limitations. While, of course, we strive na maging updated 'yung ating SEEA, for example, 'yung valuation techniques mismo ay paano natin siya mapaperfect as much as we want to? At paano natin din matitiyak na 'yung valuations ay akma talaga dun sa kung ano 'yung gusto nating makuhang numbers mula dun sa isang ecosystem? Meron ding iba't ibang techniques, ano? If we delve into the literature, may mga deductive techniques, interrogative techniques, ganyan. But aside from that, Mr. Speaker, 'yung social values din ng environmental goods and services, so how can we possibly work around these limitations?
These limitations, I believe, are real, Mr. Speaker, and that this is why the Natural Capital Accounting Council, that is to be put together by this law with NEDA, PSA, and DNR, must itself take into account the social development and human development index that any of these proposals may require, Mr. Speaker.
Other possible limitations, Mr. Speaker, ay kung paano natin nakukuha 'yung aggregate na value ng isang ecosystem? Kasi how our world works, how nature works, hindi siya simpleng 1 plus 1 equals 2. Pwedeng nakuha natin 'yung individual values ng mga nasa isang ecosystem, pero kung kukunin na natin 'yung aggregate na value, hindi siya simpleng i-add up lang natin para makuha 'yung net na value ng ecosystem na yun. And also, since economic values are marginal and incremental, hindi siya absolute, ano? So again, Mr. Speaker, sa ganong mga nabanggit naman na limitations yun, anong pwedeng work around natin?
Mr. Speaker, I'm not certain I know if there is a law that can help a workaround in the fact that values are market-driven. Therefore, the law as it is currently drafted, Mr. Speaker, I believe is what we need. It is by no means sufficient, as the good gentleman has pointed out, given the limitations, no? In terms of its intent. But nonetheless, it is an important step forward that can, at the very least, heighten our own awareness of ecosystem services and its valuations moving forward, Mr. Speaker.
Also, Mr. Speaker, meron ding valuations na pwedeng ang unang makakuha ay 'yung mga nasa industry. Pwedeng, meron silang finafund na research, tapos pwedeng naunahan nila 'yung government or other concerned groups, ano, nagusto ding mag-ambag dun sa ating PNCAS or 'yung accounting system. How can we possibly ensure na 'yung data na meron sila ay lalo na kung para naman 'yung sa benefit nung ating bansa? Pwedeng at a national level or at a local level? Paano kaya natin matitiyak na maibabahagi nila ang data na yun, Mr. Speaker? Kesa 'yung parang itago lang, ganyan, kahit na may ganong signifikan 'yung kanilang data?
Mr. Speaker, in Section 9 of the proposed measure, there are participatory mechanisms and citizen remedies that insist there is a right to information on any accounts generated by this act to common citizens. So the openness and transparency of these accounts and these valuations are in fact intrinsic to the measure as proposed, Mr. Speaker.
Okay. Next question, Mr. Speaker. This pertains to Section 4 of the bill. It says that the PNCAS will be used on, or will be based on internationally-accepted environmental economic frameworks. So it is in plural, ganyan. So aside from the UN SEEA, ano po 'yung ibang frameworks pa na pwedeng pagbatayan ng PNCAS natin dito sa Pilipinas?
Aside from the United Nations, the Southeast Asian ASEAN also has its own set of accounting system proposals and methodologies, Mr. Speaker. So among those two, the law is obviously silent because there may be others that might be more attuned to addressing the limitations that the good gentleman has already pointed out. They are not precluded by law. That is hence the open-endedness of that provision that you have just cited, that he had just cited, Mr. Speaker.
Another question, Mr. Speaker, tungkol naman sa mag-iimplement nitong batas by the time that it is enacted. Why is the PSA the best agency to lead the PNCAS implementation? Since the expertise of the PSA, edin nandyan ang data collection, pero wouldn't it be possible na, kung merong lead agency, eh DNR po 'yung ating mailagay, lalo na't ang isang ang objective natin ay matiyak pa rin na napapangalagaan natin 'yung ating kalikasan habang meron tayong iba't ibang proyekto na mapapakinabangan nung mga tao?
Mr. Speaker, the way that the law and the structure of the council between NEDA, PSA, and DNR is structured, the DNR will in fact do most of on-the-ground evaluation. But it is the PSA that is the lead agency because it is the PSA that keeps our data, particularly our economic and our macroeconomic data, which is meant to be linked to the evaluative datas of these natural capital accounts, Mr. Speaker.
Along that line, Mr. Speaker, aside sa DNR tsaka PSA, this bill mentions the creation of different government instrumentalities. Halimbawa, nandyan ang IACE NRS. Aside from that, Mr. Speaker, nandyan din ang paglikha ng isang technical working group on natural capital accounting. Tapos, meron din na pwedeng pag-expand ng role ng iba pang mga ahensya na mag-aambag sa implementation nito. Wouldn't it be possible, Mr. Speaker, lalo na if we want the government to save on human resource? And nandyan din may mga proposals on quote-unquote rightsizing, wouldn't it be better na meron na lang tayong italagang best agency tapos sila na 'yung magtitiyak na or magsasolosit ng tulong na iba pang mga ahensya rather than creating another group or set of committees, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, I think the idea here is to turn membership in these committees so that the range of PNCAS accounts, which, as I have said previously, moves from the DNR to the Department of Energy and so on and so forth, can be asked to come in. The lead agency is, in fact, the PSA, right? And the Technical Working Group of the NSA, which will be underneath this interagency committee to ensure whole-of-government approach and understanding of the accounting system, puts the PSA as the lead accounts compiler while the DNR is the main data producer. And the National Economic and Development Authority is one that will be tasked to, in fact, ensure that it is in alignment with all the development plans moving forward nationally, Mr. Speaker.
Next question, Mr. Speaker. Though I think this would be a confirmation of another point that I raised earlier. So far po, sa bill po ba ay walang nakalagay na penalty for any agency or official who will ignore or neglect PNCAS data kapag sila ay magpapasya o gagawa ng isang polisiya, Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Speaker, wala ho dito yan. Kagaya po ng NEDA, wala pong penalty clause ang NEDA pag hindi po kayo naniwala sa kanilang mga figures. Pero kung yun po ang iniisip ng ating kagalang-galang na representante, pwede naman po magsulong ng isang measure para po magkaroon ng ngipin ang ating NEDA dito sa ganitong klaseng usapin, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah. Now on the appropriations, Mr. Speaker, it says in the bill that we will allot 1 billion pesos for the first year of implementation. Ano po 'yung breakdown nitong isang billion? Magkaano po sa personnel services, MOE, capital outlay?
Mr. Speaker, that is not in the final enrolled version. The final enrolled version only says in terms of its appropriations that the amount necessary for the implementation shall be included in the Annual General Appropriations Act because it requires the PSA, and NEDA, and maybe DNR to bolster existing offices[1787.02] to bolster existing offices within those agencies to conduct and implement the natural capital accounting system.
Thanks for that clarification about the appropriations provision in the bill. With that, Mr. Speaker, I have no more questions about House Bill 8443. And we fervently hope that this bill will be used alongside, I mean, while we have human development, we don't put aside. And we even try to ensure maximum protection for nature, given that in itself it has value. And we, as humans, as pointed out in the sponsorship speech, we are merely parts of nature. Humans cannot really go beyond nature or only have a human-centric view of our environment. And with that, we thank the sponsor for answering our questions.
I would like to thank the questions and the interpolation from the gentleman from Cabataan Part List. And I couldn't agree more in the hope that this becomes quite useful in protecting our environment and balancing it with the needs of human development. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Thank you to our distinguished interpolator. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker?
Yes, what is the pleasure of the honorable gentleman?
I wish to interpolate very briefly, Mr. Speaker.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Edson Lagman for his interpolation.
The Honorable Lagman is recognized to interpolate the sponsor?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Will the distinguished sponsor yield?
Absolutely, Mr. Speaker.
Well, I am in favor of this measure, to start with. But, Mr. Speaker, did I hear the distinguished sponsor say that there is no provision on the enforceability of the data gathered by the pursuant to PNCs?
Mr. Speaker, there is no provision on penalties, Mr. Speaker, which I believe was the question of Congressman Manuel.
It's not only penalties, but enforceability that companies, developers should comply with the findings of PNCs. Because if there is no enforceability clause, then this bill has no teeth at all.
I'm so sorry, Mr. Speaker, but I'm not certain there was a question in the statement of the good Congressman.
No, I was saying that if there is no enforceability clause in this bill, then this bill has no teeth at all. Would the distinguished gentleman consider, at the proper time, a provision on enforceability?
I would, but would have to bring it back to the chairman of the committee because the intent of this bill is, in fact, to institutionalize an accounting system, rather than a development plan per se. I would endeavor to suggest to the good Congressman Lagman, as I had suggested to Congressman Manuel, that the concern about compliance to specific developmental plans and targets is not appropriate for this bill, but one that might be appropriate for a larger and more generalized NEDA bill, for example, Mr. Speaker.
Why do we have to legislate on another bill when that enforceability clause can be included in this bill? What is the use of gathering data if it cannot be enforced upon those who would like to develop? For example, a corporation or developer would like to develop in an area where the natural resource is practically depleted. Will that company or developer be enjoined or foreclosed from development in that area pursuant to the findings and data of PNCs?
We would certainly be willing to listen at the appropriate time for suggestions on how such a provision might be added, Mr. Speaker.
Well, thank you for that commitment. At the proper time, we would like to make the necessary amendment, and we will need time to really study the proposed amendment with respect to enforceability. Because this would be a bill which will be purely useless if it cannot be enforced by the proper implementing agencies. Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Thank you, distinguished sponsor.
Thank you, Honorable Lagman. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move to suspend session for a few minutes.
Session is suspended. Session is resumed. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, in light of the manifestation by the Honorable Edson Lagman with regard to possible amendments to be introduced to the bill, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill Number 8443 as contained in Committee Report 641.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. The motion is approved. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker?
Yes, please proceed.
I move for the... Mr. Speaker, I move for the resumption of consideration for House Bill Number 8265. The parliamentary status of which is in the... Mr. Speaker?
Please proceed.
May I ask the Secretary-General to read the title of House Bill Number 8265?
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. Secretary-General is directed to read the title of House Bill 8265.
House Bill Number 8265, an act providing for the registration, regulation, and operation of cooperative banks.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, the parliamentary status of the bill is in its period of amendments.
There are motion?
Mr. Speaker, I move for a suspension.
Session suspended. Session is resumed. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, the parliamentary status of the bill is we already closed the period of sponsorship and debate. May we now proceed for the period of amendments, Mr. Speaker?
Okay. Is there any objection? Chair here is none. The motion is granted. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments.
Yeah. Is there any objection? Chair here is none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Representative of Agri-Partilist, Wilbert Lee, to give his amendments for the bill.
The honorable gentleman is recognized for his individual amendments.
Mr. Speaker, these are our proposed amendments. Number 1, on page 2, in line number 29, under Section 3, definition of terms specifically under letter C, insert a definition of "on foreign cooperatives", which shall read as: "C" foreign cooperative refers to any cooperative duly registered and recognized by the relevant authority in its country of origin or recognized by an international coalition of cooperatives and registered as such with the Cooperative Development Authority, or CDA. Thereafter, the definition on samahang nayon and municipal katipunan na mga samahang nayon shall be the new letter D under the same section. I so moved, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. What does the sponsor say? What does the sponsor say to the proposed amendment?
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, what does the House say?
I move that we adopt the proposed amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair here is none. The individual amendment is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, on page 3, in line number 11, under the second paragraph of Section 4 on Organization and Membership, delete the word "and" between cooperative organizations and individuals and replace it with a comma. I so moved, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. What does the sponsor say?
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
And what does the House say?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt the amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Is there any objection? The chair here is none. The amendment is approved.
Mr. Speaker, on the same page, in line number 12, under the same section, insert a comma after domestic cooperative and before the word "or", and then insert the article A after "or" with the sentence now reading as: "Regular membership shall be limited to cooperative organizations, individuals who are members of a domestic cooperative or a foreign cooperative." I so moved, Mr. Speaker.
What does the sponsor say?
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. What does the House say?
I move for the approval of the amendment, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, is there any objection? Chair here is none. The amendment is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, number 4, on the same page, in line number 13, in the next sentence of the same paragraph, replace the word "and" after PD 175 with the phrase "as well as", and insert the phrase "and other institutions" after the word "individuals", with the sentence now reading as: "Associated members shall be pre-cooperative organizations established under PD 175, as well as individuals and other institutions, which may be foreign cooperative institutions who are subscribing and holding preferred shares only." I so moved, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. What does the sponsor say?
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
What does the House say?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve the amendment.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. The amendment is hereby approved. Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, on the same page, in line number 17, in the next paragraph of the same section, insert a comma after the word "cooperative" and before the conjunction "and", with the sentence now reading as: "Common shares held by individuals who are members of a cooperative and foreign cooperatives shall not be more than 40% of the total outstanding voting shares." I so moved, Mr. Speaker.
What does the sponsor say?
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
What does the House say?
Mr. Speaker, we move that we adopt, approve, the said amendment.
Any objections? Chair here is none. The amendment is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, number 6, on the same page, in line number 35, in the first sentence of Section 7 on Management of Cooperative Banks, insert the phrase "and the concerned cooperative sector" after the word "CDA", which shall now read as: "Section 7, Management of Cooperative Banks. The management of the cooperative banks shall be governed by the rules and regulations promulgated by the BSP in consultation with the CDA and the cooperative banking sector." I so moved, Mr. Speaker.
What does the sponsor say?
The same, we accept, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. What does the House say?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve the amendment.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. The amendment is hereby approved. Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, number 7, on page 5, in line number 30, under Section 12 on dealings of directors, officers, stockholders, and related interests, or DOSRI, after the sentence ending in 2,000, insert the sentence: "However, the limits on loans to DOSRI shall not apply to loans, other credit accommodations, or guarantees extended by the CB to its member primary cooperatives." I so moved, Mr. Speaker.
What does the sponsor say?
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
What does the House say?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve the amendment.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. The individual amendment is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, number 8, on page 6, in line number 32, under the first sentence of Section 18, on meetings, insert the phrase: "which may be conducted face-to-face, virtually, or vote", between the words "meeting" and "shall", with the sentence now reading as: "Section 18, Meetings. A regular meeting which may be conducted face-to-face, virtually, or vote, shall be held annually by the General Assembly on the date fixed in the bylaws, or if not so fixed, on any date within 180 days after the close of each fiscal year." I so moved, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. What does the sponsor say?
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
What does the House say?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve the amendment.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. The amendment is approved.
Mr. Speaker, number 9, on page 8, in line number 17, under letter K of Section 20 on the powers and functions of cooperative banks, insert the phrase: "Offer financial technology services such as digital lending and payment and digital wealth management, among others, subject to prior approval of the BSP", and then insert a new letter L, which shall contain the sentence in the original letter K, which is: "Offer other banking services as provided for in Section 53 of RA Number 8791." I so moved, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. What does the sponsor say?
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
What does the House say?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve the amendment.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. The amendment is hereby approved. Please proceed.
Mr. Speaker, number 10, lastly, on page 10, in line number 19, under Section 29, on the Oversight Committee, provide that the Committee on Cooperatives Development and the Committee on Cooperatives of the House of Representatives and the Senate, respectively, shall be members of said Oversight Committee, inserting after the word "Senate", the phrase: "which shall automatically include the Committee on Cooperatives Development and the Committee on Cooperatives, respectively." I so moved, Mr. Speaker.
What does the sponsor say?
We accept, Mr. Speaker.
What does the House say?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we approve the amendment.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. The amendment is hereby approved.
Mr. Speaker, no further amendments on my part.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, there being no other committee or individual amendments, I move that we close the period of amendments.
Is there any objection? Chair here is none. The period of committee and individual amendments is hereby terminated. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we now vote on second reading, House Bill Number 8265.
There is a motion to approve House Bill Number 8265 on second reading. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Bill Number 8265 is hereby approved on second reading as amended. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend session.
Session suspended. Session is resumed. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 8218 as contained in Committee Report Number 559.
Mr. Speaker? Um, yes, what is the pleasure of the Honorable Gentleman?
Uh, Mr. Speaker, before House Bill 8218 reaches the plenary, as a member of the Special Committee on Nuclear Energy, I would like to raise a few points. Dahil ito ay isang napakahalagang panukalang batas para sa ating deliberasyon. Uh, before I proceed to my points, Mr. Speaker, of course, I would like to give all due respect sa sponsor ng panukalang batas na ito. I am awed with the extensive knowledge of the sponsor pagdating sa nuclear energy at sa pagiging staunch advocate nito sa ating bansa. However, Mr. Speaker, may ilan lang akong gusto mang i-point out muna. Given that before we discuss bills here in the plenary, dumadaan ito sa komite. First point, Mr. Speaker, regarding discussions on the committee level. Uh, I think kapasin pansin ano, na may mga topics that are very much related to the bill.
Mr. Speaker?
Na hindi natin nabibigyan ng much time para usapan.
Representative Raul Manuel?
Point of order, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, you recognize Congressman Ino D?
Mr. Speaker, the House bill that Honorable Manuel is referring to, we still haven't discussed it currently, so may we please proceed with the Majority Leader to first recognize the sponsor of the measure before we move on to the period of interpolation.
Yes, I agree.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I'm not objecting na pag-usapan natin panukalang batas. I'm just pointing out na dapat maputon record natin paano natalakay itong panukalang batas.
Representative Manuel, you're out of order.
Bago ito dumating sa plenary.
Session suspended. Session is resumed.
Mr. Speaker?
Majority Leader, there was a motion before we suspended session.
Yeah, I move that we consider House Bill Number 8218 as contained in Committee Report 559, submitted by the Committee on Nuclear Energy, copies of which, uh, the bills have been previously distributed to the members. I request, therefore, that the Secretary General be instructed to read the title of the measure.
Is there any objection? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill 8218.
House Bill Number 8218, An Establishing the Philippine Atomic Energy Regulatory Authority and Providing for a Comprehensive Legal Framework for Radiation Protection, Nuclear Security, Safety and Safeguards, and Physical Safety in the Peaceful Utilization of Nuclear Energy in the Philippines and Appropriating Funds Therefore.
Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we open the period of sponsorship and debate.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader?
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Chairperson of the Committee on Nuclear Energy, the Honorable Mark Kuwanko, for his sponsorship measure.
The Honorable Mark Kuwanko is recognized to deliver his sponsorship speech.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, I rise to sponsor House Bill 8218. Uh, but before I do that, I'd like to, um, apprise this House of, uh, the sequence of authors who originally wrote this bill. It started with House Bill, uh, 371 by Representative Joey Salceda, followed by House Bill 481, sponsored by Gloria Macapagal Arroyo, followed by House Bill 456526, sponsored by Congressman Ron Salo, followed by House Bill 542, sponsored by, authored by Representative Don Fernandez, followed by House Bill 1255, authored by Congresswoman Devina Grace Yu, followed by House Bill 2103 by Congressman Marvi Marino, uh, followed by House Bill 3301, uh, authored by Rufus Rodriguez, followed by House Bill 3898, uh, authored by Representative Carlito Marquez, followed by House Bill 4822, uh, authored by Mohamed Khalid Dimapurro, followed by House Bill 6030, sponsor, uh, authored by Marco Huanko, followed by House Bill 7003, authored by Congresswoman JSL Victoria Yu, followed by House Bill 7049, authored by Marco Huanko, and, um, the last author, original author of the consolidated bill was Congressman Lex Anthony Coliada, uh, who authored House Bill 7330. So these are thirteen House Bills that were consolidated into House Bill 8218. And, uh, total authors as of today are thirty-three authors. So there are thirteen original authors, and, uh, the rest, there are twenty additional co-authors of this bill. A total of one hundred thirty-six, uh, co-authors, authors of this bill. Good afternoon, uh, good evening, Mr. Speaker, my esteemed colleagues. The Philippines first manifested its great desire to pursue nuclear power when Republic Act 1815, aka also known as the Philippine Nuclear Energy Act of 1957, June 22, 1957, was enacted. This act also created the Philippine Nuclear Energy Commission just three and a half months prior to my birth on October 6, 1957. The following year, amendments to RA 1815 were enacted by the passage of RA 2067 in 1958. This act added science, research, and development as by the title of the bill creating it an act to integrate, coordinate, and intensify scientific and technological research and development, and to foster invention, and to provide funds, therefore. Ang punto ko dito, Mr. Speaker, na una pa ang nuclear power, which was synonymous with science and technology when the, uh, uh, Science Act of the Philippines was created in 1958. RA 2067, also known as the Philippine Science Act of 1958, repealed RA 1815, but created the PAEC, the Philippine Atomic Energy Commission, under the National Science Development Board, the forerunner of our today's DOST. This great desire to pursue nuclear power as well as science and technology has deep roots in then-American President Dwight D. Eisenhower's Atoms for Peace Program. The Americans were great influencers of Filipino thinking of that era. Our nuclear regulatory framework was disrupted in January 30, 1987, when the PAEC was abolished and reorganized as the PNRI, Philippine Nuclear Research Institute, which was placed under the DOST through Executive Order 128 under President Cory Aquino's then-revolutionary government, just three days before the ratification of our 1987 constitution. The effect was that PNRI was tasked to both promote and regulate nuclear technology and ionizing radiation. A clear conflict of interest situation for the PNRI. This conflated state of affairs caused and causes PNRI to be conflicted in its purpose, which is an impossible situation for a credible regulator to be in. House Bill 8218 now seeks to correct this situation by creating a politically and fiscally independent regulator, the Phil Atom. A regulator which sole purpose is to regulate nuclear technologies and ionizing radiation for safety and security. A regulator which would be credible not only in assuring the safety of our people, but also assuring the security of nuclear materials and facilities in the peaceful use of nuclear energy and technology to the international community. Although nuclear technology has many uses in so many varied fields, from agriculture to environmental protection to industry, to medicine, and many others, the elephant in the room, peaceful application of nuclear technology, is for electricity and energy generation. This is a use that we Filipinos have missed out on since May 28 in 1985, when the IAEA OSAR II mission inspected and then concluded that our one-hundred-percent-complete nuclear plant was ready for core loading. Since February of 2022, the entire world witnessed, um, witnessed of being dependent on fossil fuels as one price increase after another rock-electricity-generating costs worldwide, causing these prices to skyrocket. Had we installed a fifty-five-percent nuclear fleet instead of the fifty-five-percent imported coal fleet we have today, we would have been insulated from these fossil-fuel price increases. Not only for this crisis, but for many crises throughout the past decades. Further, we would have saved the lives of thousands of Filipinos whose lives were shortened by pollution of fossil-fueled electricity sources. Furthermore, we would be emitting much less global warming gases and particulate matter, thus protecting our environment. And this as a free consequence of going nuclear. Furthermore, we would have saved and would continue to be saving many billions of US dollars per year in avoided fossil-fuel importation. Indeed, it is not hard to see how Indeed, it is not hard to see how our economy should be at least tens of percent larger than it is today, meaning trillions in larger GDP and millions of better jobs for Filipinos. Today, we have the chance to change direction as much of the rest of the world wants to do, to go nuclear for electricity and energy. Ang nuclear po, likas na mura, likas na malinis at likas na naaasahan. As our legacy, distinguished and dear colleagues, let us enable Filipinos to choose nuclear as an alternative energy source. Mr. Speaker, House Bill 8218 seeks to establish the Philippine Atomic Energy Regulatory Authority, called Philatom, and provide for a comprehensive technical and legal safety framework for the utilization and application of nuclear energy in the Philippines, to reflect internationally acceptable practices on the peaceful use of nuclear energy and to ensure that the Philippine National Legislative and Regulatory Safety Framework is consistent with the nation's obligations under relevant international instruments, to ensure adequate protection to people and the environment against the harmful effects of ionizing radiation. Your support for this bill is therefore greatly encouraged, my dear colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize S.D.M.L. Sandra Marcos for his manifestation.
The Honorable Sandra Marcos is recognized for his manifestation.
Mr. Speaker, given and after hearing the speech of our fellow colleague, Representative Mark Kuwanko, this representation would like to manifest and record their support for the said bill, not only because this representation believes that it would address and fix many of the energy woes that our country is facing today, but because of the proponent of this bill being a constant vanguard and stalwart for the application of nuclear energy in the Philippines over the last few years. So that being the case, this representation would once again like to manifest full support for this bill. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Representative Marcos, for your manifestation. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill Number 8218.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is approved.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Raoul Manuel of the Kabataan Party List for his manifestation.
Representative Raoul Manuel is recognized. Proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. To clarify, we are not objecting to this bill being sponsored here in the plenary. What we wish, Mr. Speaker, is for us to have a proper treatment of this bill and consider all viewpoints and, of course, how this bill has reached the plenary. That's why we are standing up to raise some points, notwithstanding the fact that, of course, later on, we will proceed to the period of interpolations for House Bill 8218. Mr. Speaker, to proceed with my points. First point, sa quality ng discussion sa the level of the committee, tingin natin, Mr. Speaker, ay merong mga valuable points and valid concerns na nais nating mas natalakay sana sa level ng committee pero hindi nabigyan ng sapat na panahon for us to really have fruitful and conducive discussion of this House bill. Also, Mr. Speaker, we noticed that not all members of the committee are given the opportunity to really explain their points. There are points that are entertained whenever they are raised by some committee members but are not entertained if those same points are raised by some other committee members. Pangalawa, Mr. Speaker, may mga pagkakataon po na kapag merong mga pinagbubutahan due to division of the House, ay hindi nakakaabot ng quorum and the majority vote sa loob ng committee. I'm pertaining to two instances, noong March 21, wherein although the committee started with a majority or a quorum, pero when we proceed to voting yes or no, ang nangyari lamang po ay plurality vote, hindi po majority vote, which goes against the rules of the committee itself, Mr. Speaker. At pangatlo, noong naaprobahan po ang committee report, it was held on May 18, but invitations for members of the committee were only sent the day before, May 17, which is not the usual practice, na kailangan po ay meron tayong three days na allowance para sa mga notices ng meetings. And noong May 16 po, ay kakarequest pa lang sa Office of the Secretary General to hold the meeting by his room. So napaka-konti po ng panahon, Mr. Speaker, para sa ganitong timeline. And finally, dahil ang pinaguusapan po natin na energy sources, ang magiging energy mix na ating bansa, I'm standing up, Mr. Speaker, bilang isang kabataan, na nagsasalita, hindi lamang para sa mga kabataan ngayon, pero para din sa mga pinapanganak palamang at this very moment at mga ipapanganak palamang. Dahil ako sa pinpon ng energy source, Mr. Speaker, concerns not only the Filipinos alive today. We are talking about Filipinos who are yet to be born, at sila po ang magde-deal with at makakaranas ng kuwanuman 'yung ating magiging energy sources at 'yung consequences ng lahat ng ito. Kaya we would appreciate, Mr. Speaker, na sa ating period of interpolation, sana po ay mas marami tayong colleagues na kasama natin habang pinaguusapan natin ang ganitong napakahalagang panokalang batas na adukasiya po ng ating kagalanggalang na sponsor. Yun lam po, Mr. Speaker. Maraming salamat.
Thank you very much, Representative Manuel, for your manifestation.
Mr. Speaker, may I make just a short response rejoinder to...
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize Honorable Chairman Mark Kuwanko for a manifestation.
Yes, Honorable Mark Kuwanko is recognized.
I mean of the broad-mindedness of our distinguished colleague. However, for the record, I would just like to say that all the proceedings of the committee were proper. We have our committee secretary here and the staff who can attest to that. And the proper forum for such a complaint, I think, should have been to the Committee on Ethics at the appropriate time, not here on the floor. And so I look forward to the interpolation of the good gentleman, party list, and we will thresh out all the unanswered questions, which we did in the committee extensively. We have witnesses here, the members of the committee, who we practically voted on every line, Mr. Speaker, because they objected to every line. So to say that there was not proper debate is misinformation to this August chamber. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution Number 911 as contained in Committee Report 485, and for this purpose, may I request that the Secretary General read the title of this resolution.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Resolution 911.
House Resolution 911, resolution urging the Department of Foreign Affairs to establish a consular office in the municipality of Ipil, Province of Zamboanga-Zilbugay.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution Number 911.
There is a motion to adopt House Resolution 911. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution 911 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution Number 912 as contained in Committee Report Number 486, and for this purpose, may I direct the Secretary General read the title of this measure.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Resolution 912.
House Resolution 912, resolution urging the Department of Foreign Affairs to establish a consular office in the municipality of Ubay, Province of Bohol.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution Number 912.
There is a motion to adopt House Resolution 912. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution 912 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution Number 915 as contained in Committee Report 489, and for this purpose, may I direct the Secretary General read the title of this measure.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Resolution 915.
House Resolution 915, resolution urging the Department of Foreign Affairs to establish a consular office in Kabangkalan City, Province of Negroes Occidental.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution Number 915.
There is a motion to adopt House Resolution 915. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution 915 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we... But we consider House Resolution Number 987 as contained in Committee Report 544, and for this purpose, may I direct the Secretary General read the title of the measure.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Resolution 987.
House Resolution 987, resolution urging the commission and elections to use the automated election system in the barangay and sangunyang kabataan elections.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution Number 987.
There is a motion to adopt House Resolution 987. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution 987 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Raoul Manuel for his manifestation.
Honorable Raoul Manuel is recognized. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. This representation believes that due to the multitude of issues we experienced during the 2022 elections, that traced its roots to the implementation of an automated election system, and that is a full automated election system, we should scrutinize AES and explore the possibility of conducting hybrid election systems. We must not repeat the bad experiences that we had during the 2022 elections. Up to now, many people's groups have asserted that the 2022 elections was marred by several controversies with the smartmatic voting machines as well as the vote transmission mechanisms of the complex. If any policy should be tested for viability, it is the hybrid electoral system. It will combine the speed of automated transmission as well as the security of manual voting and polling, which will further strengthen the democratic basis of our elections. We should also fortify the regulations and subsequent implementation of measures against vote buying, private armies, corporate financing and party switching. We also hope that this call for experimentation with AES will not herald the full implementation of the AES during the upcoming barangay and SK elections in October and in other future elections, Mr. Speaker. The AES has failed us too many times, and this August body's wisdom should be to move away from a fully automated election system towards a hybrid one. That would be all, Mr. Speaker. Maraming salamat.
Thank you very much. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution Number 1028, and for this purpose, may I request the Secretary General read the title of this measure.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Resolution 1028.
House Resolution 1028, resolution congratulating and commending Carlos Edriel Pocizulo as one of the best gymnasts and most be-medaled athletes the Philippines has produced, thereby honoring the country with acolytes in his quest for excellence in gymnastics.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution Number 1028.
There is a motion to adopt House Resolution 1028. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution 1028 is hereby adopted. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we consider House Resolution Number 1056, and for this purpose, may I direct the Secretary General read the title of this measure.
Is there any objection? Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Resolution 1056.
House Resolution 1056, resolution strengthening mutual cooperation between the Philippines and Korea through the Philippines-Korea Parliamentary Friendship Association.
Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution Number 1056.
There is a motion to adopt House Resolution 1056. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution 1056 is hereby adopted.
Mr. Speaker, earlier we designated members to the bicameral conference committee on the disagreeing provisions of House Bill Number 7939 and Senate Bill Number 1480 on the rationalization of disability pension of veterans. Mr. Speaker, I move that we designate Representative Jorge Bustos, chairperson of the Committee on Veterans Affairs and Welfare, as additional member and as head of the House panel of the said bicameral conference committee.
There is a motion by the Majority Leader. Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, on behalf of the majority, I move to elect the following members to the various committees, to the Committee on Natural Resources as Member Mercado Revillalani, to the Committee on Population and Family Relations as Member Abante Bienvenido M. Junior, to the Committee on Public Order and Safety as Member Abante Bienvenido M. Junior, to the Special Committee on Basis Conversion as Member Miguel Peter B., and to the Committee on Agriculture and Food as Member Emano Yevgeny Vicente B. I so move. There is a motion to elect the aforementioned members to the aforementioned respective committees. Are there any objections? Chair hears none. Motion is approved. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, there being no business left for the day, I move to adjourn session until tomorrow, the 31st of May, 3:00 p.m. Is there any objection? Chair hears none. Session is adjourned until tomorrow, May 31, at 3:00 p.m.